You're going first.
Yes, sir. I think Jody's gonna welcome it all, but then I'm gonna go first.
Okay. See the closer.
The closer.
Well, Bonnie's gonna do the borrowing, the revenue, and then the borrowing piece, and then you close it at the end, okay?
Oh, okay. Oh, so he tanks it. I'll do borrowing at first, too. That's good. So I won't.
He always has that golden tan. He rose. My, I have an aura in my throat. It's an emergency.
Bridgette is joining us at all for this? Okay.
Yes.
Good morning, and welcome to the May 21st, 2024 monthly work session. Today, we will be discussing capital improvement budgets, student code of conduct, strategic plan update, policy review, and updates. And Mrs. Ziegler is on a field trip with her daughters and will be joining us via phone. And Superintendent Connor, if you would like to introduce Agenda Number One, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for accommodating our change in structure for our workshop. I wanted to put everyone on the dais because there will be a lot of things we're looking at on the screen, and felt that that would be an easier setup for us. But I want to first start off with our capital improvement budget update. I want to thank several of our fine staff here today who are going to walk us through some of those adjustments. You know, we take a look at this several times throughout the year, making adjustments based on our projected forecast of needs and revenues. And so we have Mr. Jody Dumas, Bonnie Penner, Dr. Mike Kemp, Diane Comanati, and Jane Dregger here, who are going to walk us through our capital projects, existing and future projects, and take any questions that you may have. So I will hand it over to Dr., to Mr. Jody Dumas.
Well, thank you, and good morning, everybody. I'll kind of kick it off, and we're gonna structure this the way we have in the past. And what I want to remind the board is, as Superintendent mentioned, we come to you several times a year just to kind of review our capital budget in draft form as we're driving towards an adopted CIP over the summer and a tentative budget over the summer where you formally adopt kind of this year's budget moving forward. This is one of those review opportunities in front of you to make sure we're headed in the right direction, and there's nothing you see that's kind of out of whack as we move into that final approval process. So with that, I want to say that what you have in front of you today is an updated spreadsheet of the summary spreadsheet. It was laid on your desk this morning for you to kind of follow along with us. And I will say thank you to Bonnie and her team. So this is an updated spreadsheet. It looks a little different than the one you have had in the past in front of you. Her team has really restructured this, so as we're looking at future years and planning and revenue sources, it's much easier for us to divide projects between those revenue sources as a team and make the planning process much easier. And that's gonna be super important as we talk through this budget, because our budget's becoming ever tighter and more difficult to get all of our projects in. So that's gonna be the theme of this morning. So with that, let me turn it over to Ms. Penner, and she'll walk through the revenue part of the spreadsheet at the top.
Good morning. So as Mr. Dumas mentioned, I will start with the first section of this spreadsheet, which recovers the revenues, the funding sources for these projects. As you can see, for the 2425 year, we have total revenues expected to come in at just over $206 million. Now, that encompasses the revenue sources you all generally see in the capital improvement program. We have our local capital dollars that comes from the 1.5 mils that is generally levied. The expectation is that will bring in $160 million this year. We will revise that once we receive the actual assessment of property values from the property appraiser. We also have budgeted in revenues just over $30 million in sales tax, $7.5 million in impact fees, and almost $1.4 million in capital outlay and debt service funds, which come from the state. And those have been anticipated to increase, so they're escalating at some very conservative rates. So we have the local capital outlay portion, the millage portion with an escalation factor of 4%, whereas sales tax, we have an escalation factor of 2%. We are still, the impact fees, the result of the increase in the impact fees, we're still trying to figure out exactly how that impacts us. And so we do not have that escalated at this time, but we are seeing that those are increasing. And the other piece about the impact fees that makes it difficult from a forecasting perspective is the timing of those is not consistent as some of these other funding sources. So for that part, we keep with a very conservative estimate for our impact fees. So you can see, again, the revenues are healthy and moving up as we move forward in this five-year plan. You'll also see in the out-years, so not for the budget year we are getting ready to step into, but the following four years, in each of those years, there is plan to issue debt, which will be funding the construction of a new campus. I'll let Mr. Dumas and the rest of the panel speak to those particular projects, but you can see that we will be issuing debt in order to support the construction of new schools, because that tends to be our mode of operation, is to issue debt only to construct a brand-new school. You also have in front of you the debt profile. I believe you all are used to looking at that. And as you know, the state requires that we keep our debt payments below 75% of our capital outlay millage levy. The district, the school board, has set that lower to be 50% of the local capital outlay collections. And so you can see those two lines to show you what the top end of the threshold is for us, as well each year's debt obligation based on this new funding stream, based on the new issuance of the debt. So you can see that even as we add these new amounts, we will still be below that 50% threshold. So again, we are looking at issuing debt that's more so than we have in prior years, but we are still staying within that 50% required threshold. And that's it for my portion.
Okay, Dr. Kemp.
Well, good morning. It's my first opportunity to address you, so the board, on day 22. I'm on day 22, and I gotta tell you right off the bat how impressed I am with the team so far that we've seen it have in place. We have great people in place. There's nothing like the power of having right people in the right place with the right plan, working towards the mission of every student every day. And operations, we like to say, you know, I want everything to work for every student every day for all our verticals that we're out there with. But I can say with great confidence, though, that we're gonna continue as a team to become as reliable and efficient as we can. And I think that's just in time, because with our work with the strategic plan that will be unveiled soon, you'll start to see how critical it is for us to have strategic priorities and exercise even some options of strategic abandonment where we need to, especially with the financial challenges that every district has experienced. But we're gonna be experiencing some more in Sarasota, especially on the capital program side. You know, traditionally, we've been very blessed with revenue streams, and we've been able to, we've been able to do some great innovative things for our schools through capital projects. And a lot of these things, when I was looking at the list, you know, I was thinking all the years I've served in capital programs, thinking, man, how lucky, how blessed we are in Sarasota to be able to do these types of projects. But in watching the team review the CIP, as Jody mentioned, you know, I kind of watched him struggle for the first time trying to make some things work. It's something that I've been used to in other districts. We've had to start that way usually. But before I turn that over to him, I think one of the most important things I can state to you is, in my first 22 days, is to continually be mentioning the variable that significantly impacts capital programs and finance in general as we move forward. And I can honestly say that I think that probably the most forgotten variable of the pandemic that impacted all 67 counties is the cost of construction, labor, material supplies. Some districts have been impacted more than others. Some districts experienced it immediately and had to make capital program project adjustments immediately. Some districts that were a little more revenue-rich had the opportunity to not be as impacted as far as the capital project schedules concerned. But I can say, I can easily make the argument that the single biggest impact of the pandemic is the continued rise in costs of construction, labor, and materials. So when things cost twice as much to do half of what we used to do, that becomes a great concern on the capital side. And I think it's my responsibility to always let you know, and through the superintendent, let you guys, the board, know that our pandemic has not ended. It never ended in capital programs. Yes, we didn't receive one additional capital program dollar from the state, from the state funding side. Yes, we received ESER. That money was earmarked for specific things. We might have got a chance to do some filtration things with HVAC, maybe some small capital things out of that. A lot of that was restricted for learning loss, offsetting the essential employees that we had to do, the learning loss, and also PPE. But as the rest of the world dropped all the masks and the PPE, and when we went back to work, our capital program cost of construction continues to increase. When an elementary school costs $80 million in this particular market, that's a concern. K-8, $100 to $138 million for a K-8. A high school right now that we have is $207 million, projected to be $300 million in the future. Just to give you some quick perspective, and I'll turn it over to Jody. He can review the CIP. I just opened up an elementary school in the previous district in North Florida market, just to show you how the market conditions impact your budget. I opened up an elementary school fussing about opening that elementary school, because it cost me $42 million. Three years ago, I mean, pre-COVID, we opened and had another project, same school, same build. It was $26 million. Just in the North Florida market alone, it went from $26 million to $42 million. I get here, find out that an elementary school with architect, design, construction is $80 million. Your K-8 is $130 million, could be. And high schools projected to be $300 million. That just goes to show you what four hours down the road and what the market conditions do. Just with two projects alone, when she talks about debt service, and we've had to do more debt service than normal, two projects alone, your high school project in the Welland Park and the K-8. You know, between that, you're almost a quarter of a billion, a quarter of a billion in debt that we issue. So managing debt is important. I work with Bonnie's team, does a great job, but we really need to be strategic on that, looking at the cost of construction, which means we might have to look at other options in the future, maybe do more classroom additions instead of full construction builds. Those are the strategic priority things that we're gonna have to address moving forward. But with that said, I can tell you, I'm extremely excited about the team, and while we have what we have in front of us, the opportunities in front of us, as well as working together to make sure that we truly create continuity and leadership across the board and collectively work with you to take care of kids. But this time, I'll turn it over to Jody. Jody's gonna review the CIP and the projects and discuss where we are with that and maybe some of the challenges.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Kemp. As Dr. Kemp mentioned, this year was particularly troublesome for the team to really try to make sure we could fit all the priorities and all the funding needs into the five-year plan. And as we go through it, I'll talk through where we had to make some tough decisions and move some things around to be able to get to a balance that wasn't negative. And so I think that's gonna be a recurring theme for us as we move forward. As Dr. Kemp has said, we're really gonna have to focus on the strategic objectives of the board and make sure we're focusing on those areas, and we're funding those first and creating those priorities in the district if we want to make sure we're meeting the needs across all of our schools. So with that, I will start to take you through appropriations, and we'll talk through each project. And if you've got any questions, certainly let me know. I will highlight the ones certainly that have changed since the last time you saw them. And the one thing I will mention also, well, two things. If you're looking at your spreadsheet, you'll see there's a new column called "Five-Year Forecast" that was not on your summary sheet before. That is just summarizing all the dollar figures in the four years to the right. Okay, so that's just a summary line that's showing you everything funded to the right. And I will mention also that this is a planning document, right? And so as we're planning all of our years on this document currently, and this will change as we move into your adoption this summer, remember, the out-years are certainly planning years. And those projects, although they're in one year now, they may be in another year when we bring it back to you, depending on market conditions, depending on growth in the district, we're always adjusting those four years in that look ahead. So I just want to remind you as we move into this conversation. So with that, our first line item as we move down is charter school capital outlay funding. You know, the law changed in terms of what we have to provide to charter schools, and I will just point out that that is not an insignificant number coming out of our capital budget as we move forward. So when you think about pressure on the capital budget, it is not only what Dr. Kemp mentioned in terms of pricing and projects costing us double what they have in the past. We have more money going into charter schools, and then we're seeing growth in the district that we have not seen in quite a while, so we're funding that new growth. So there's a lot of pressure points on this particular budget. As we move down, Bay Haven Building 1 renovations, that is an additional $5 million we put in the project last year. That's for PE, covered PE area and bathrooms as we move off that campus. That is gonna be an exciting renovation. It is currently. If you get a chance to go out there and tour that campus, that is gonna be just a nice rejuvenation of a very old building out there. So it's currently underway. And if you've got any questions on current projects that we roll through, Jane is here and can talk through status of any projects that you want more information about. Glen Allen chillers is just a maintenance project. Some of these chillers are a bunch of chillers that are coming to the point of their useful lives ending, and we go ahead and replace those between 15 and 20 years, depending on how they're functioning. That's a replacement of chillers at Glen Allen. You're seeing the same thing next time down at Heron Creek. Those, again, are asset preservation priorities that the board has set for us. Lakewood Ranch Elementary K-5, this is a change in this particular place. You're seeing this in the budget. This was actually moved up a funding year. What we're always doing is monitoring growth across the district and adjusting where these projects fall. Again, we don't want to build before we have to, but we had to move that project up a year. You're seeing that a year sooner than we have in the past with some money in there for Jane to start architectural design and then get into the construction of that project a year earlier. So in talking and discussing the conditions that drove that decision, let me turn it over to Diane Comanati to talk about growth in that area.
Thank you, Jody, and good morning, Superintendent and members of the board. So we moved this up due to the high growth in the Lakewood Ranch area, now called the Waterside DRI. This property was set aside as part of a school planning agreement in 2010. As part of that agreement, we were able to purchase this property. It's under contract for purchase at this time for $700,000. That was the average of two appraisals at the market rate in 2010. So that was a really good agreement we had in place at that time. We moved that project up in the capital budget because we are seeing growth in that area and overcapacity, existing overcapacity at Tatum Ridge Elementary. So Tatum Ridge is currently at 110% utilization. We have 14 portables currently on that campus, adding three more this summer and projecting to add six more in the next two years.
And that is a difficult campus to add portables to, and the cost, every additional portable we add on there, the cost is exponentially higher for electrical capacity and things of that nature. So it's not one we can wait on. So that decision was made to move this up a little bit sooner to get going on that particular school. The McIntosh Ag Project, this is Phase 2. It is sitting in there to be funded this year. So we are currently under Phase 1 construction right now. This is Phase 2 construction, and let me turn it over to Jane Dregger to talk a little bit about where we are in Phase 1 and that role into Phase 2. And we funded that Phase 2 fully at a $4 million line item.
So Phase 1 started in September of last year and is gonna be substantially complete here in the next couple of days. Where we demolished a couple of buildings, we provided all of the stormwater infrastructure for the site for both phases. We put in some new driveways, sidewalks, and parking, new lift station, new light poles, new electrical service, new dumpster pad, new fencing, and two new animal barns. Phase 2, the scope of work is the covered pavilion, also known as the arena, the greenhouses, the biodigester system, and then Building 16, which is the demonstration kitchen and some instructional spaces and new bedding storage. We are anticipated to start that July 1st of this year, and substantial completion will be for summer of next year.
Okay, thank you, Jane. Moving through the list, we've been interested in this project for a while now. Glad to see it funded in this coming year. Northport High, HVAC refresh and Science Wing refresh, that is gonna be a major project for us. This budget has been increased as we tour campus and we look at conditions on campus, as we talk with principal and staff on campus, as we look at our condition assessment data that we have for the campus. We are making sure that as much that needs to be completed now as part of this project, we are gonna try and get done all at one time. Northport High is one of those schools where wrapped around in HVAC refresh. We try not to go back five, six, seven different times to do projects. We try to pick up everything we need to do, wrap it into that particular project. It saves costs, saves general conditions, and when we turn that school back over, it's refreshed. And so not only are we including things like HVAC, our normal scope would be carpet, paint, cabinetry, things in the classroom. We're also looking at bathrooms, the way the bathrooms are laid out because of our bathroom situations around the district. We're looking at the VPA. That Northport High VPA has not been updated in a while, so in terms of lighting and sound systems and materials on the stage, we'll be looking at all those issues. We've got some roof issues there. So as we continue to wrap in these additional items at Northport High, my anticipation is you'll see that project budget grow a little bit into the summer when you finally adopt the CIP. But again, that's all aimed at making sure we're refreshing that school at the appropriate time. And that school, it's time for a refresh, and so we want to make sure we do a good job there for them. Next project is our Oak Park Wing renovations. We've been systematically walking our way through Oak Park over the summer. That's a school that never shuts down. And so we're able to free up a wing over the summer, and our construction team gets in there and do a full refresh on that particular wing. And so you see these next three years, we will complete out that continued refresh of Oak Park. A new project last year was a sand volleyball court, which you funded over two years. And we are happy to say we've started on some of those projects across the district at our high schools, and we'll continue to kind of roll those out over the next couple of years. We're actually planning one down at Venice High as part of that project, and we've got one in plan at Riverview going on. Their soccer fields, actually, up by the road and by the tennis courts very soon. Sarasota Middle Reroof, part of that asset preservation facility services budgets these projects based on the condition. So like we're doing at Booker Middle currently, it's a three-year phased project, but these are the same exact schools, same exact roofs, and so we're getting Sarasota Middle next. And down the line, you'll see Laurel and LaComis coming soon also. Southside Elementary Traffic, this was, we have a lot of traffic problems at a lot of our schools. With, over the course of the last several years, we have more parents driving their kids to school, and sometimes it creates some traffic issues within the community. Southside is one of those where we have not only cars creating issues, we have a lot of golf carts coming onto campus. And so we're gonna look at how we're handling golf carts and cars entering campus specifically over by the bus loop area. We've got a little bit of room flexibility on campus. And so over the next year or so, we're gonna see if we can do something to address some of the safety concerns in that community. STC Phase 3, we had been asked to see if we could move this project a little closer, and so we have moved that up. You can see we've currently got half funded in '25, '26, and another piece funded in '26, '27. And so again, with the board's request, we have been able to move that project up a little bit sooner. And we are currently in the process of having discussions of what that looks like with Mr. Dr. DePillo. Triad Building 29, this is the expansion of the Triad Campus. They've grown quite a bit, and so they've got middle school and high school in the same building. And so the goal will be to use our current Building 29, which has been underutilized for years, to be used for middle school students at Triad. And so our goal, we're working on this right now, is to have that open, if not for the start of school, close to the start of school, so that we can accommodate additional students at Triad. So that's moving forward. Venice High Stadium Enhancements, this is the last year of that funding. This is just about a $10 million project. The other piece of the funding was a year ago. We are in the process of design with the group and having weekly meetings, and this is an exciting piece. This will be our last synthetic turf football field in the district. Everybody else has been converted. So Venice High will be our last synthetic football field. The track was done earlier, so we'll actually refresh the track again. And then the exciting part about this for Venice is where, when we rebuilt Venice, we didn't touch the athletic facilities. So the concession stands, the bathrooms out there, those are the buildings we're gonna go get now and make sure we refresh those and rebuild those to current standards. So it's an exciting project for Venice. The next line is just a summary line item. Then we have Inglewood Elementary, replacement of Buildings 4 and 5. That you have seen before. That has not changed. We're gonna continue to move that project forward, and we have had discussions with the Inglewood staff and what that might look like as we get closer. Laurel and LaComis Roof, we spoke about. That'll be the third in the Three Sisters Schools. That's only one year of funding. There are additional years of funding that you can't see in the five-year work plan. Excuse me, the funding plan. Northport Elementary School, so, and the next line item, and the line item below that is the next Northport High School. And so these are two new growth schools. As we look at Northport, we have verified they're, we think they're in the right spot in the capital budget. And as you gasp and look at those prices to build an elementary school and a high school, remember, we are escalating by 10% each year based on what we're seeing with costs. And so that's what gets you to those costs for those new schools. So in terms of placement in the capital budget, let me turn that back over to Diane to talk a little bit about what's going on in the community of Northport.
So again, we're seeing a lot of growth in Northport as well. There, the whole, it came in years ago. There was the northeast quadrant of Northport came in for development, and then nothing ever happened with it. Well, that is all now coming in for approvals again for development. So we're seeing a lot of activity in that area, which, where both this elementary and high school are situated within the Woodlands DRI, which was part, these were properties that were part of that agreement with Woodlands and have been just kind of waiting for development, and now we're seeing that come through. So all of our Northport Elementary Schools are either overcapacity or nearing capacity. So this is something we're going to need within the next few years to address that growth in that area. Along with, Northport High School is currently sitting at 93%, and that's not including some of the programs that they have on that campus, which require space, but doesn't really reflect in your enrollment count. So that Northport High School is gonna be needed as well in the next few years.
And as you look at those projects and that projection, you know, they're out in Years 4 and 5. And so when you think about that Northport High High School, typically, we're not even funding it to '28, '29. That's a minimum three-year build beyond that. And so when you start to think about where we are, 90% utilization in that many years out, we think we've got it in the right spot. And again, we'll evaluate these every year as we're looking at 40-day counts and what's going on in the community. But right now, we feel comfortable. We're in the right spot with them. Oak Park Reroof, and this is only two years of, four years of funding that'll probably get us to this reroof, but that's to reroof all the buildings at Oak Park. Riverview High School Aquadome, this is replacing their temporary facility they have out front. There's a drive-along proctor. This is gonna be putting in, and we had presented to you at one time a rough layout of what that might look like, but this is adding that space for the Aquadome and a couple of classrooms on campus. Sarasota High School Master Plan VPA, this is one of the ones that unfortunately, we wanted to fund this earlier. You know, we are currently under an HVAC renovation in Buildings 13 and 14 on that east side of campus. That's a three-year project that Jane's running. We would have liked to move this closer to the finish of that project, so we could roll right out of one into the other, into the next project, but we just could not do that. This is really only two years of funding. There's a third year that's falling off the radar. And unfortunately, in terms of making tough decisions, this is one we just could not get funded where we wanted to fund it. So we had to make that tough decision. We pushed it off a little bit. It is fortunately still on the radar, but not as soon as we would like to get it. The next project is the new cafeteria at STC Polytech. We introduced that project to you a few years ago, and that is currently sitting in '28, '29. We introduced that project to you a few years ago, and that is currently sitting in '28-'29. And then the final project at the bottom is the Welland Park K-8 school. That has changed in the fact that we've pushed that off another year, and so I'll, again, turn it over to Diane to talk a little bit about why we pushed that off another year, and what we're looking at moving forward with the K-8 in Welland Park.
So what we're seeing here in the Welland Park area is, oh, sorry.
I thought I pushed it on.
Hit it again.
Can you hear me now? So what we're seeing in the Welland Park area, we still have capacity at the middle school level, so we're currently monitoring, continuing to monitor the growth and development in that area. Where Taylor Ranch is currently over capacity, we're monitoring that as well, and kind of keeping an eye on what's going on in Welland Park, as well as the new charter school that is there. The, monitoring their enrollment for the next few years as well. What we are looking into is the new garden project, where we are actually adding capacity to garden, and then looking to relieve overcapacity at adjacent schools in that project.
So our goal is always not to build until we absolutely have to, and so we'll continue to try and look to push that project off if we can. Again, as Diane had mentioned, accommodate some of that growth at the elementary level, depending on what's going on at the charter school, potentially at Garden Elementary with our upsizing of that campus just a hair. And so again, we'll come back to you as this kind of moves every year during the 40-day count, but our goal will be to continue to try and move this project off until we absolutely need to build it in that area. Again, back to the theme of making sure we're not spending capital dollars unless we absolutely have to on growth or asset preservation, we want to make sure we do it at the right time because our funds are very tight. As we move down through the bottom, you can see the totals as they roll up, and I would say at this point, let me ask if there are any questions on current projects that we went through, is there anything on the list that the board is concerned with, or is there anything not on the list that we need to be considering as we, again, modify this draft into the summer for your final approval?
You talked about programs at Northport High School that were set aside, that were actually at capacity versus the general 90-93%, can you give us an example of what one of those programs?
Certainly. Well, when we talk about capacity, fish capacity, that's the numbers we always use, it gets in front of that percent, but we know that not all classrooms can be used to that fullest extent, right? And so for example, ESE classrooms, things of that nature, the early childhood program that we have down at Northport High, those eat up space at a faster rate than a normal classroom would, and so when you look at the utilization at Northport High, you may say, we say it's 90%, if we talk to staff down there, administration, many times they say, well, we are at capacity, can we add a portable? And so that's, that's that push and shove in that conversation about utilization of classrooms.
That makes sense, that really, that helps, thank you. And then my second question was growth. Do you, Bonnie, or do you have any future projections for next fall, or when will we have those to see what the projected numbers are for this fall?
Sorry, are you talking to student growth?
Student growth, thank you.
So we are still working off of that which was presented, I think it was a month or so ago, so I will, I can resend those to you.
Please.
So we're not looking at this point at seeing that much growth, but we do know we've got some construction, and we are, we are expecting those to come into our classrooms. So we work very closely with our growth department, so we think in the out-years, we are going to see some additional numbers. We don't have some of those out-years specifically forecasted as it stands. We are finalizing, we just received, I think it was today or yesterday, anyway, the recalibrated third survey, so the results of the February count, and it is looking like there's a little bit of growth, especially in the elementary schools, versus what we saw when we got the recalibrated reports for the October count. So we are seeing that wave, not a huge wave, but we are seeing that come through, and, you know, not look as gloomy as we had thought, and that along with what we've been talking about, the new neighborhoods and all the new construction going in, we are expecting, we just don't necessarily have exact forecasts at this point.
Correct, I know it's not exact, if you could resend
Sure.
the numbers that you had, and then any of the updates that would go with that, it aligns to this, it would be very helpful, appreciate that very much, Mr. Enos. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent. Thanks, guys, great, great work as always, awesome staff here. I've got three things, two aren't too good, one is, one we'll have to look at, one of the things is a reference to the Landings. You know, I know, talked to the staff here, we talked about it the other day, I mean, we've talked about it, I've heard anything from 10 to 18 million dollar renovation here at the Landings, I don't know how many people that I have saved out of the elevator in the green awning, at least three I'm aware of that have been stuck in there. So I know that that would be one thing I'd like, you know, the superintendent, I know we've talked about that, I know Mr. Dumas previously, we've talked about it, Mr. Kemp, we haven't had a chance, but I think that's something, as well as this is very valuable piece of property here, being in between the two shopping centers here, and of course, you know, this is, which gets to my next point, what I'll talk about, this is in a flood zone, is that I've seen the water here where it's not inhabitable, we would be totally out during a significant hurricane. So one of the things I think we should look at is what are our options, as well as for our South County teachers and staff, as I make the trek every day, and I speak my misery to Mr. Edwards as he comes from South County, to drive here on a daily basis is a lot, and so I think that part of it is, is we lose some of the contact with South County, especially when you start looking at growth in Welland Park, you start talking about two more schools down at Woodlands, you start looking at all this stuff, I think that that would be something to have a conversation to look at. Relocation, what can we do, can we get something out east where the property values may be cheaper? Where, again, I know as, you know, with, looking at Mr. Connors, continuity of leadership, especially in a structure this big, is very, very significant. I mean, that's like at the sheriff's office, I use that as my point of reference, is saying, oh, well, you've got 25 different substations, it's kind of hard to get everybody on the same page, to be able to have everybody move into the same goal without that continuity. So I would like to see that to be added in there, and I think that is, you know, we don't want to make an impact to the capital budget, but I think that it's a conversation that needs to happen, because at some point, when you look at the FASIA and the SOFIT and the technology here, this was never made, for those who've been in Sarasota, this is never was made to be a school district building, this was doctors' offices and attorneys, and the office that SROs had back in the day was where they stored all the paint and the gasoline for the lawn mowers. So, long story short, is I'd like to see that. The second thing, I hate to bring up bad news, but the National Weather Service saying that the hurricanes for this year, we should have at least 11 named hurricanes, it's supposed to be worse than 2020, and that, when we look at this stuff, is one of the things I'd like to ask the chair is for us to put a, which I don't think that we've had in a long time, I know I haven't seen it, is we should do some type of a work, a part of our workday session to just on hurricane planning adjustment. Just so everybody knows, it starts in two weeks, on June 1st. So one of the things I'd do is to look at the plans, make sure that we're equipped. The other thing I would do is part of the capital improvement, is, and I spoke to Mr. Connor, they've had some changes at the EOC, Ed McCrain has now left the EOC, so it would be good to be able to bring them back into the mix, and also is that I would like to see that, and it's part of the cap improvement, and I know me and Mr. Dumas went out multiple times, is that we have to look at where the staff of the district would be long-term in the case for hurricane, and that we don't have the air conditioning structure to be able to have it at either STC North or South. So I know we talked at one point, a million dollars plus for a generator, et cetera, et cetera, and I think just for the staff to be able to, if we did have to be, because literally I've worked this where we were evacuating people with the sheriff's office out of this area, because the Phillippe Creek had flooded, and this was, you know, we just have to take that as, especially coming to this, is looking at doing some type of capital expense for generators that, North and South, because, you know, you just don't know where it could hit. It could hit North County, it could hit South County, you look at the tornado damage, knock on wood, you look at the tornado stuff that's been going on, I just think that is something as an expenditure that we really should look at, especially with just the generators, because as a staff, we may be like, look at Bay County, they were absolutely devastated, and we have to have someplace where our staff can go in order to have some type of operation center, and right now, we're, we have it, but we need to be more prepared in case we have anything catastrophic. So that would be the only thing I would ask you to put on your radar in the quick future, to be able to have that, to be able to be addressed. Thank you.
Ms. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one question, and then a couple of comments, if I may. Did we receive any additional capital dollars now that we give our charter schools part of our capital? Did we receive anything?
No, we received none.
That's what I thought, and I think that's very important for the public to understand, that that was something that was decided by the legislature, and that that is coming out of the traditional schools' budget. So that might be something that we talk about at a legislative, because I think, and I am absolutely pro-choice, but I think we get added more on our plates with charters as they take away things. So I think that'll be really important, but I want the public to know that that's coming out of our capital dollars, and those are not our buildings. So we don't own them. So I have a little problem with that, so, I think, but that's not, that's for another discussion. But also, I just wanted, anybody that drives around from Lakewood Ranch to Northport can see the construction, and it's kind of hard to understand that our enrollment is, kind of stays the same, but we are seeing all this growth, because that's the only place we can grow. Our existing schools, they're landlocked, like Southside, when they built the new building, there was to be no more portables, or when Tatum Ridge was being built, was built big enough to though that there would be no portables, and both those schools have portables, and they're ugly. But anyway, that, they're for our students. So I just want people to understand that, that all that growth out east and south is because that's, that's the only place there is to grow. So I'm glad that, I know it, it's always a balancing act for you all to decide where the schools are, but from your explanation, you chose wisely. And on the farm school, I think it's really nice, because for a few years, we had the old sign, "Coming Soon," and "Soon" never came. So now on McIntosh, we have the sign that says "The Farm," and it shows the building, so I appreciate that that went up, and I know, talking out in the community, people are so excited about that. That's the one school, the one addition that has so many different organizations excited about, so thank you. And then, you know, Friday night, we had graduation at Venice High School, and I hadn't been in the back since they tore down the old building and built the new one, so I was kind of disoriented, because I thought, ew, those are those old buildings that are, were supposed to be torn down, that flood and are nasty. So I was talking to one of the APs, and he was telling me that, thanking us board members for approving for the stadium, and I said, you know, this stadium's too small, you can tell that it hasn't kept up, and he said, yeah, because during the football games, people have to stand on the track, which is starting to wear down the track, so they're very excited that, all of that, and I think the public just needs to understand that we didn't touch anything in the back, all they see is the beautiful, well, it was a new school, it's still relatively new, but they didn't see that back end. So I just appreciate everything, because I know it's really tough, and the money, and I, I agree with everything Mr. Enos brought up, I think that the Landings is, I mean, I, you know, half the time, some of the toilets don't work, it's like out of order, and then you just pray that they're not going to flood. So I don't think people realize how awful really, even though everybody tries to keep it up, it's pretty old. So, and then, and then the hurricane and the planning, because, you know, back in the day, we used to have it every year, we all knew where we were going, I was assigned to Brookside as the second team to go in, we all knew exactly, and I'm not saying that isn't there, but I think we've just had so many changes and so much going on, we've, we need to get back to that, so, but thank you all very much, this was good.
I was going to say, we have a slot open at Brookside, if you'd like to.
I know. I don't know, those alnighters were pretty rough.
Thank you very much, well done, seeing no further comments or questions, I didn't see you on the, please, Mr. Edwards. Thank you.
I have a lot of things, that they're kind of all over the place, but just to piggyback on the Landings conversation, I think that is a high priority, it frustrates me even when I see that we're spending money on office renovations, or moving walls, or those kinds of things, I just, you know, I think that's money that, in the long term, we could be using in a better way, especially as it's been pointed out, this is a pretty prime spot in terms of resale and looking at a more efficient build for administrative offices, I think that in terms of discussions, I'd like to move forward in that direction as well. When it comes to the generators, I know that generators were talked about in a larger capacity, I believe there was some conversation about it legislatively, to have the legislature pay for those kinds of things, especially since the school district is being challenged in often to be those, the shelter or places for our communities, and they're significant, I think they're into the millions to get those kinds of generators on board, and when we're talking about legislative agendas, I wouldn't just stop there, I know that we've had a partnership where we, I think we kicked in $10 million, for example, to the Fire Academy, I think this conversation is a larger conversation to be had with the county, to be had with some of the city municipalities about sharing in particularly generator resources, I think we have to build in the hardening aspects of all our new builds, so that's already factored in, we're not going to ask for money for that, but when it comes to upgrades of generators, I think there's a larger conversation to be had with county executives and city executives. And in and along that line, I know that we did not get the appropriation that we had asked for, for the Ag project, does that mean it's off the table? Can we go back and ask for that funding, even though we found a way to afford it ourselves? I feel, I feel that, especially since continuing education and CTE is a priority of the state, I feel that we were a little short-changed there. Impact fees. I know that we raised them as high as we could possibly raise them the last time, I would like to make sure that, and I know that asking for higher than what we're allowed to ask for is a larger process, can that process start now? Can we start putting, because I think that when we're starting to, as Dr. Kemp points out, that we're experiencing, you know, these incredible construction fees that I think that the developers need to pay more of their fair share, and so I suggest that we start whatever paperwork is necessary to start asking for higher impact fees, and to make sure that we're moving in that direction. Oh, let's see, charter school capital outlay, do we have a comparison of, or a trend, I'm in Mrs. Marinelli's camp with that as well, do we, do we have some sort of ability to show the public of what, what has happened from, just in that line item?
So if you look in the appropriations section, the very first line, other than the summary, is the charter school capital outlay, which that is the local capital outlay, the portion of the one and a half mils we levy that is obligated for the charter schools. We have always shared our capital outlay with the charter schools, but it was on a lower than a per pupil amount. So when you look at '24-'25, the $10 million, that's the first year of the legislative expansion, where they said, no, you need to give the expansion, where they said, "No, you need to give the, the charters their per pupil expansion," and, but they gave us five year, or four years to get it in by going, what, five years? By going up 20% every year. So when you look at the $10 million, that's approximately what we've given them in the past, and it's very close to the, or it is the 20%, that first 20%. So you can see it escalate each year, and, you know, to, to meet that obligation, as well as trying to, to forecast for some of the, the changes in population that we anticipate for the charters. So we, we have that piece of it. We can definitely show the trend as to how much we have provided, and then what we forecast out. You'll also see a second line item, almost down at the bottom of the, the appropriations. So about the fourth line up, there's another charter school capital outlay payments piece, and that is a flow-through. So the charters now receive the, the PICO dollars that are allocated by the state. Those have all been moved toward charter payments, or at least that go to the K-12. So you can see there as well, we don't escalate that, because again, it's just a, it's just a flow-through, so we're going to receive revenues and we're going to send it out, so there's no sense in trying to determine what, how that might escalate. But you can see as well, that's a pretty significant amount, when you think of the, the proportion of the population that is going to them. But we can isolate that, if you'd like, or it might be also helpful to show it as a proportion of the total dollars that we have. You know, to, to your point, you know, looking at what is, is moving out of the, the 1.5 mils, you have to go back and historically know that we used to be able to levy two mils. So at that time, we weren't necessarily sharing with the charter schools, so we had a lot more access to our local dollars to support our individual capital projects by being able to levy that two mils. So that's now been reduced. As well, we would receive substantial PICO dollars for not only maintenance projects, but for new construction. About the same time we went down to 1.5 mils, we also lost that funding source. So right now, we're seeing this shift in the, the addition of a per pupil requirement to share our 1.5 mils. Really, the damage happened about 10, 15 years ago, when we lost the half mil and we lost the, the PICO dollars. So, yes, this is significant now, but, but the real pain happened quite a while ago.
So I'm glad you brought that up, but, because where I was really asking was the escalation, like, at one point, it was zero, we didn't share, and now, you know, we're heading in, in the wrong direction, and that was really the trend. And Dr. Kemp, this is a total side note, I didn't have it on my notes, but I think it's really important, and I ask Mr. Connor this often, and I've asked these kinds of questions, unfunded mandates, these kinds of challenges that are presented to the district, I think that we should be able to, to explain to the public and to the board, quite frankly, where the legislature had made adjustments for, let's say, things like change, or, or choice, which also I'm a fan of, but how those kinds of things impact and, and the change and the challenge for a superintendent to run a school district. If we could start getting some of those actual reports of unfunded mandates, things that have changed in the legislature, even over the last two years, that have impacted how the school district runs, and the challenges to running the school district, I would love to, to see those kinds of things. HB1, I mean, those are the kinds of things that the public asks for all the time. Jody, I know that when I got here four years ago, I think the Booker re-roof, Booker Middle was just beginning. What's the escalation of the cost of a re-roof from four years to now?
I'm going to turn that over to Jane, but I'll, I'll tell you, when we, so, I used to think I was pretty good at budgeting projects, and so when we originally were talking about the Booker High re-roof, it's a metal roof, I think I had that budgeted in my mind at four, $5 million. When that got priced, it was 12. So with that in mind, I'll, I'll let Jane kind of talk you through kind of where we are in that project.
So, a couple of things make that project more expensive. One, we found a lot of rust in the infrastructure, so as we uncovered things, we had to really replace some structural elements and some fascia and soffit. The other key piece is that we have to do those after hours, so those, that construction is happening after kids are, are gone from the campus and nights and weekends. So what we did for the future roofs of the similar schools is we took the actual cost of our project and escalated it 10%, per year, based on where it falls in the, in the plan, as opposed to when that GMP was completed.
Do you think 10% is the right number?
I think it's the right number on the right scope, and we, we got really good at identifying where the problems were. After a couple of the buildings, we anticipated those, and we built our GMP on what we kind of uncovered on that campus. So I would say, yes, that's a, that's a good model and good information.
Great, thank you. So if we go from, we think Booker Middle is 12 million?
It's like 13, 8 total.
13, 8. I like 12 better. I thought I was choking at 12. And the next re-roof is Oak Park, or is it...
Sarasota Middle.
Sarasota Middle. What's the projection on Sarasota Middle?
So we've currently got about 20, just under 22 scheduled for Sarasota.
A $10 million hit.
Yep. And again, not all is just price escalation. A lot of that scope depends on what the actual conditions are on campus. Yeah, but, but we think that's reasonable, unfortunately. And when you, and when you look out at Oak Park, and we were, and you don't see it all anymore, because we pushed off the five-year plan, just because we had to make the decision to do that, you know, Oak Park is 20-some-odd, 25, 24, 25 million dollars in terms of a re-roof. You know, we used to build an elementary school for that, so that, that is shocking.
I know, and that's kind of the numbers, like, when I got here, it seemed like $8 million to re-roof was a lot of money, but 25 million. Okay.
Therein lies the challenge that, that we, that we face on the going in to improve older facilities, because when I hear restroom renovations, plumbing, roofing, you can almost account for the fact that we have to bring everything up to code. And so when you start looking at current code, just with restroom renovations, with roofs, and we run into those scope problems, and we're having to put a percentage on top of that to kind of account for that, hoping for the best, but nine times out of 10, we're, we're having to make improvements. We always have to bring it up to code, which is an expensive venture today.
So, Dr. Kemp, you and I can talk more about that offline, but I really think that the justification of when we go to a legislative agenda about, here's what has happened to us specifically in Sarasota, here's the money that, and the, and then the cost of, of just renovations and maintenance alone, really need, we really have to start asking, not just for our academic excellence, which is killer, I mean, that's what we're here for, obviously, but the runnings and the day-to-day, and the costs that are associated behind the scenes of what you all do are, are going right through the roof. We all see it in our personal homes. We see what's happened to our, you know, our, our property insurance, and when we had a re-roof during E and all those kinds of things were, were a challenge. STC Phase III. I recall that that was on our previous budget, capital budget, at 20 million, and it was out at five years, right? Does that sound right? So now we have it at 16 million. I believe we, we've gotten $1 million from Sarasota Memorial Hospital for that project, has the city of Northport. Not yet, not yet. So, I'm, that's a, that's an example of really sitting down and working with our, our partners to figure out how we can move together, and I appreciate the commitment from Sarasota Memorial Hospital for that $1 million to help reduce the cost of that build. And that build is essential for continuing education, for the growth that's happening in Northport. Lastly, I would just want to say to all of you, and this is something I notice all the time when I'm out at schools, the maintenance of what you guys do on an everyday basis to make those buildings look brand-new, they sparkle. They, and, and the time and effort that you put into making sure that we don't find ourselves 10 years down the road with an extraordinary expense of renovations or whatnot, I am, I'm grateful, because you do an outstanding job. And I'm not sure the community even is aware of how those buildings really just look brand-new, even though they're 10, 15, 20 years old. In that vein, I would say, as we're looking at those VPA renovations and the, and the build-out that we just did at Booker, I think we have to readjust how we maintain those facilities as well, because those, the level of equipment that's going in there is highly sensitive to just about breathing. So just, as we're refreshing and lighting and all those kinds of things, I think that we have to look at how we maintain those. So, well done, everyone. Thank you so much.
And one second, I'd like to make one comment. I'll turn it over to Dr. Kemp to close. Thank you very much, Board, for, for allowing us the opportunity to present, and you mentioned maintenance on facilities, and I would like to mention it, it really is a team effort, and two people who aren't here, that's Don Hampton, who's retiring here in June, he'll be a huge loss to the district who really runs facility services, and Eve Johnson, the Assistant Director. So I'd be remiss if I did not mention them as part of that conversation in terms of building maintenance. With that, Dr. Kemp?
A couple of points in, and then a suggestion, just to reiterate, and as we close. There's no doubt, when you look at the numbers on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, that new growth is going to drive everything we're doing. The new growth, the cost of new growth, and the cost of construction, and that's going to continue to squeeze that. It's a, it's a, it's an interesting dichotomy, because there's the direct correlation between the desirability of the school system, when we become number one, and we will, when we become number one, there's a direct correlation between the desirability and growth, and the cost of construction with the growth. That new growth is going to start to commandeer a lot of our capital program budget across the, the way. And as that happens, it's responsibility of us to make sure that, that we main, we, we look at that debt service, because debt service comes out of capital program funding first. And where districts mess up, and I've been in, all in the Southeast, is when we, when we lose track of the, when we have to do the debt service, we're forced to do the growth, we have to build the buildings, we're not getting additional capital funding, we have to, we have to have seats for children. Where districts make a mistake is they get too far into debt service. That debt service comes off the top of capital program. What that does is all your money ends up getting tied up into five, six new communities, and leaving very little for the rest of the schools to support, and it creates problems. When you look at just, just the, the roof replacements, just the chiller, the air, the chiller replacements for a gym, multi, multi-million dollars. When you look at things that happen, and this is making the assumption that nothing we have is going to break, okay? So we're making an assumption that if, you know, we have an emergency, or if we have a storm, Ms. Enos, if we have a storm, and we have storm drain failures, we have things, things we have to do. So debt service, we really have to watch and monitor. We got to be smart with and strategically leverage that debt. That's a concern of mine, based with just the debt service and the cost of construction. Look at all the new growth projects in this five-year program. We don't have that cash sitting here to do that. That would be debt service. So if we max out our capital credit card, then, then all of, then we have less to support the other schools. Another thing we have to really look at is reclass, look at the reclassification of capital dollars to the general fund. And those are legally reclassable offenses, incidents, offenses, incidents, an offense if you're from capital programs, but those legally reclassed eligible options that used to be paid for by general fund, there's transfer, those transfers offset and actually increase your general fund at the end of the year. I think we kind of, kind of have to monitor that and do what we have to do with that, as most districts do. So, my ask is this. If you're looking for legislative priorities, one of the things I think that we have to do, and I brought this up at the state level as well, is our pandemic has not ended. For 67 counties, and what we do for Sarasota on this particular issue helps all 67 counties. If we could get all, if we could get all of the school districts to band together at the state level and get our legislators to listen, that we have not received one additional capital dollar to offset this growth, yet more and more revenue's being legislated out of the capital budget. You mentioned the choice options. I can tell you, it used to be just the FTE, FEFP, FTE would just pass through if a district had a half-cent sales tax. Now that's completely prioritized based on student enrollment. If you're, if you, if you leverage any type of millage, now that is a transfer, as it should, and, and that's fine, but there needs to be an offset to the capital program funding if we're going to meet the demands that are in front of us. We're just at the edge where all these new growth projects and the required replacement projects for keeping air conditioners, because, you know, even though, Mr. Connor, I went to school for 13 years with kindergarten with no air conditioning, I know that wouldn't be tolerated today. I can tell you that these, our capital budget, budget's going to be commandeered, and I'm just concerned, I've been concerned, I've mentioned it, the state level. So with that said, if you're looking for a legislative priority, if we could really leverage that across the board to see what we can do to help offset this, because Sarasota will become number one, and when we become number one, it's going to create a growth and desire that we're not going to be able to keep up with, with a capital funding perspective without a, without a lot of help. So, thank you so much. Again, I'm impressed with the team. First class, thank you, Mr. Connor.
Thank you, Dr. Kemp, and thank you for your insight and experience, and very much noted, becoming number one. We're on our way. Thank you, Superintendent Connor. Moving on, student code of conduct.
Just to follow up on that, just a couple of things for the board. I will be following up on the options regarding the landings, looking at some updated student enrollment numbers we requested, looking to ensure that we have a hurricane work session in terms of planning as we embark on that here in the next month. Obviously, legislative priorities, we'll be working in towards that, so we've got some great ideas from this group, looking at generators and how we can partner with our county officials to see what agreement we can come up with to maybe help in that area. In terms of impact fees, I can answer some of those questions around when we can go out, just based on state statute and what we've already done previously. We would be able to submit notice November 1st of 2026 to the county about the increase, but we wouldn't, we could go 12 months prior to that for the formalized study that has to be done, so that'd be July 1st, if we were interested in looking at implementing any new impact fees. In terms of top unfunded mandates, I could, I could rattle off a million of them right now, but I will make sure that we follow up with that, and I think that's it in terms of follow-up for that, unless I'm missing anything.
Great summary.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is student code of conduct, and we will have Dr. Megan Green and Don, Dr. Don Clayton come on up to talk about the changes and updates to our progressive discipline and our student code of conduct, and I am very excited about the changes that they are going to share with you today.
Okay. Are we on?
We are on.
Okay. Good morning. So we are excited to meet with you this morning. Dr. Clayton and I, and also Mrs. Brooke Teal, have been working very closely with a lot of different groups this year, doing a whole revamp of our student code of conduct to make sure that it is a resource that all schools across the district can rely on to provide a consistent approach to not only equitable consequences, but also interventions of support for all of our students. And so the approach that we took in revamping this document was first meeting with multiple groups of stakeholders. So the first review of the code of conduct started with the chiefs. So we met with the elementary, middle, and high school chiefs to get their input. We started with the existing document, and we started talking through ideas and revisions of how we could approach building out a matrix of consequences that would be appropriate in a progression based on the level of infractions that, that currently exist. And then after meeting with the chiefs, we brought it to the superintendent's cabinet and did a review at that level. We then brought it to school and district administrators and created a focus group, where we met with them for an entire day, and we went line by line and, and took their feedback, and, and every feedback that we got from them, we redlined the document, added to it, and took things out, added things to it, and in between each of these groups that we met with, we inserted legal. So we made sure that we were in compliance with policy, with state law, and got their eyes on every revision that we made. We took it to our community stakeholder focus groups, we talked to numerous entities across the county, we brought in our transportation supervisors, and had an entire focus group just with our route supervisors, because we know that they spend a great deal of time with our students, so we wanted their perspective on the document. We had one-on-one meetings with each of our school board members and got their input and added their feedback. We met with SCTA- We met with SCTA teachers and had a staff, teacher and staff focus group meeting with them and went line by line with the document. And each time, again, we built, we continued to build on what was in front of them. We brought it to the principals in a virtual meeting, got their feedback, and then we brought it to the school board meeting, and Mr. Connor included it in his highlights, and the link went live. And so it's been live up to date now since that last meeting for the public. And we, Dr. Clayton will talk about where we are with that. We haven't gotten a whole lot of feedback yet, but we're hoping that we will get more after today's workshop. And now, where we are today, we are also engaged in, we're going to have a summer meeting with multiple groups to talk about how we incorporate our parents into this as well, because we know that if we can partner with parents at the school level, we will have the greatest chance of thwarting unwanted behaviors in our schools. And so we are going to be meeting with our student services, ESC, Dr. Moore is part of this conversation, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, to engage in how we can support our parents in their engagement with student behaviors in school and at home. So our continuous review of the code of conduct and the portions that we put in front of the public is to make sure that this document, we gain as much feedback from the various stakeholders to arrive at the best possible resource for our school in addressing student So ultimately, we aim to address all discipline concerns by providing interventions and support so that we can create consistency in implementing our discipline practices at the highest level, because we know that if we get the right intervention and the right consequence, we have the highest likelihood of unwanted behaviors being thwarted for good. But we also want to make sure that we create consistency across all of our schools so that we don't approach one infraction differently at one school than we do another.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Green. Can I, can you hear me? Okay, great. So I just want to say thank you again for that great summary of where we have been. Before we talk about this slide, one of the things I just want to quickly say is that we really did approach this code of student conduct with the expectation that if a student is struggling to behave, we're going to teach them, just like how we would if a student were struggling to learn how to read, we would teach them in different, varying research-based ways. So we're really excited about this code of student conduct. One of the things that you'll see that's featured, just like our old code of student conduct, is that infractions are classified into one of four different offenses. Level one being those very minor offenses, level two being those intermediate offenses, things that are more serious. And level one and two offenses are generally things that, you know, our teachers are looking at in classrooms, or things that happen maybe in a school-wide setting like the cafeteria that are, again, on the more minor end. Level three and level four, those are the major offenses that are happening in our schools that result in a number of different things. Many of those offenses, as you will see, are things that are called a CESSAR offenses that have to be reported to the Florida Department of Education because of the serious nature of the offense, and in some cases, they involve law enforcement as well. So with this, we decided that we were going to take this code of student conduct, and now there are two code of student conducts and keeping compliance with our statutory requirements. So there's the elementary version, and there's a secondary version. So for the next few slides, what we'll do is talk a little bit about what these consequences look like on the elementary end, the secondary end, and how they may be the same or different. So this level one infraction is an example of something that happens in our schools from time to time for different reasons, disrespectful language. So what this features is the code title, but then also a definition, so we can have that consistency that Dr. Green mentioned earlier in terms of what disrespectful language might be. And then, the administrator at the school, when they're kind of working with the student and with the family, they are going to look to see if it's the first time it happened with the student. These are the types of consequences that they can choose from that option under level one. If it happens a second time, they have all of the options from level one and level two, if it happens a third or a fourth time down the line. So this is an example of what disrespectful language looks like. If this were actually on the elementary and the secondary code of student conduct, it's the same verbiage that we have and the same consequences. Again, we're thinking of these things as opportunities to teach children, you know, these are the appropriate ways to talk in a school setting. So that is an example of disrespectful language at level one.
And just to clarify, this would be disrespectful language from student to student.
Student to student.
Not student to adult.
Thank you for that clarification. The next one is a level two infraction example, and this is at an elementary. So we're thinking elementary, our younger students for this one. And this is a code that is called physical aggression. Again, I mentioned CESSAR earlier with our Florida Department of Education that defines things like fighting. One of the things that they direct schools to do is to come up with local codes for things that fall outside of the window of, or outside of the definition of fighting, but are physical in nature. So think younger students who may get involved in an incident that might be like pushing or shoving, and things that have to absolutely be dealt with, it's a serious offense, but we want to make sure we do everything we can to stop it. So this is similar to level one. All of the progressions you'll see, there's the first occurrence, the administrator, after getting the information from the student, the parent, the teacher, et cetera, they all will pick from a consequence on that level. If it happens the second time, then they'll pick from a consequence on that level or the second one. And then also, we're also focusing here on the restorative things that we're going to do to help prevent the behavior from happening again. So behavior contract with monitoring, for instance, may be something that would happen if this were a repeated offense. And then also, thinking about other restorative practices. One of the offshoots here is the collaboration, again, with our, as Dr. Green mentioned, with our partners, to see how can we really support parents, how can we support children, how can we support teachers to make sure that we're putting interventions in place. So the next one is a level two infraction example at the secondary level. This is something that I know is very near and dear to everyone's heart, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to really address in our school setting, and this is tobacco use. And tobacco use is a CESSAR level event reported to the Florida Department of Education. And tobacco use is something that also does include electronic devices. So when we met with our community groups in particular, we had such great feedback from our community groups, they were just on board, really wanting to make sure we do everything we can to provide interventions and support to the students. So that's why you see here, there's different things, such as getting our kids involved in things like teen court, or drug-free youth, which is a motivational incentive to help encourage children to remain drug-free, tobacco-free. Students working against tobacco, which is an organization with our Florida Department of Health. Our Light Share Student Assistance Program. One thing I will point out, I want to make sure that everybody's aware, that these are all interventions to be put in place with parental consent. So these are definitely things that we would only do with the parental consent as well. So this is, again, a progression, and the next example is a level three infraction at the elementary level. So this level three infraction at the elementary level is a fighting example. So students get involved in a fight, you know, what that looks like, it's a very serious thing. One of the things that we're doing on that, you can see for this level three example, now we're getting down to, you know, one occurrence, a second occurrence, because it's more serious. And you can see here that we're even at the elementary level, wanting to make sure that if there's a mental health need there or anger management need there, we're getting our agencies involved, like maybe ADAP, which is something that's approved in our community as well, or other inter-agency supports. So you'll see that on both of the occurrences, and then also the referral to district offices, such as my office, our office, with the district discipline team, or for other mental health supports that maybe are coming out of student services or something of that nature. The next one is a level three infraction, and here we took the same infraction for secondary. So the fighting infraction in the example, and you can see the difference there, we highlighted it in green at the bottom, which is that, you know, when secondary students are fighting, they will be referred to the discipline office on the first offense, and we think about other contracts and other agreements that we can put in place to, you know, discipline the student, but again, at the same time, offer those interventions and support. Now, the fourth example is the example of Florida Department of Education CESSAR drug and drug distribution. Obviously, this is a very serious offense that happens, it involves law enforcement. And, you know, when this occurs, there's one chance, you know, there's one thing that happens, and these are the things that are the consequences that will come out of it from the school setting. Okay? So I know that's a lot. Right now, thank you again for approving the advertising period. Two weeks ago, when we had our school board meeting, we immediately, after it was approved, had that on the district and the county website the day after. And so we have it on our district website for a community-wide review of the code of student conducts for both of them, the elementary and the secondary. And we also have this QR code or this link where anybody in the community can go on the code, and they can review it, and they can provide us some feedback. So just looking at this yesterday before I left here, we did have one comment, it was a great comment, and it was from somebody in the community who thought that it would be a great idea for us to really make sure that we advertise this to the families in a very robust way, once we do have the final code of student conduct approved. We do expect that as the advertising period wanes, that we will have additional comments. And then what we do as a team is we review that, and then we decide to incorporate things in the code of student conduct based on that. So that's where we are right now, so thank you again for approving that. And any feedback or questions or things that we need to think about?
Ms. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both and everybody involved with this. So I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And probably you might know where this is going to be leading from previous comments I've made before. So what vehicle is going to be used at the schools to address these interventions?
So, and you can jump into.
Sure.
I think it just depends on the nature of the infraction. So if the infraction calls for a restorative practice, for instance, that could come from the administrator, they could partner with the counselor, and together as a team, determine what would be the appropriate intervention to apply. So I'll use like vandalism is one that I go to. If a student vandalizes the cafeteria, a restorative practice that the administrator may lean on is, well, now you have to clean the cafeteria. So that would be an intervention and a consequence at the same time, that the administrator and the counselor would work together to provide the student document, follow up with the parent. So it would depend on the infraction, and then where are we in the progression? Is this the first time that it's happened? Is it the second time? But they would go back to that document, that code of conduct, to say, okay, let me see where the student is, is this the first time that it's happened? What would be the appropriate first step or second step? And then go from there.
So then that leads, when you have this, who all at the school levels are going to be providing these interventions? Because I'm looking at this, and I of course see the counselor, which is appropriate, but how much more is being added? So who else is going to be there at the school level to help with this? Because the counselors cannot do it all.
No, so the administration is going to be the main point of contact. So we will be having professional development for the administration for the new code of conduct that's going to be rolling out here this summer. That will be the first step. But then we are also going to be incorporating monthly meetings for our administrators who are the main hub for discipline that we haven't, we have not had this past year, but because this is going to be new, we want to make sure we're bringing them back together each month to touch base with them, to say, okay, how is it going? What is happening? Let's do training on the data that we're seeing, right? What are the more frequent offenses? And then how can we bring you back together to make sure that we are supporting you in the consequences that we're seeing and the infractions that are being noticed?
And then on the restorative practices, are there several people at the schools that are trained? Or does that still fall on the council?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we're working through with student services as well. One of the things I want to mention too, that Dr. Green just mentioned, is we really want to work with our administrators also and our school partners. So like when we're talking about our wonderful organizations in our district, just really making sure that we lean on these great organizations that we have as well, so it doesn't all fall on the one counselor or behavior specialist or something along those lines. But as Dr. Green stated, that administrator would be the person to coordinate it and to really make sure that those efforts are being followed up in a really meaningful way. So we're also bringing in our community partners to meet with them regularly, to make sure that we're hitting those goals as well. And then as far as the restorative practices, we are working with student services to really figure out what does that look like and how can we grow that? I'm really excited. One of the groups that we recently met with as well is the group that you may be familiar with, I'm sure, Shore Group. So, you know, we've met with them recently. I know they're committed to seeing restorative practices as well in our district and just, you know, having that as a focal point. So that's something that I'm hoping will continue to grow.
Because I know, you know, in the past, we've had the peer helpers, we've had all that training, and at all levels, some teachers are just excellent at working with students like that, above and beyond. So I just want to make sure that no one group gets all of this, and that everybody has a part in it.
Right, yes.
Yeah, and I like Dr. Green's, you know, initiative to have the administrators to come through together on a monthly basis, so we can share those best practices. So where schools are doing a really great job of sharing the load.
Sharing the wealth.
Right, and bringing in those organizations. We can highlight that and help that to continue to grow.
And I think when we work with, because we have so many great partnerships, but I think that consistency of personnel, when we're using agencies, the turnover can be great.
Right, yes.
And that's a concern if there's a relationship that is to be built between the student and the family and the school, if there's always a turnover. So if you could monitor that, because that's always a concern, if that's our best use of the monies to be going out, so.
When we met with the teachers and we had our all-day focus group, that was a phenomenal experience. They gave us such great insight, and they asked, can we do this again? And we're like, absolutely. Because we, I mean, you spend the most time with our students, right? And that's our talent. Like you are boots on the ground, you walk in the door every day. And so we want to bring them back in the fall and continue to meet with them, to hear, okay, how's it going? What are you seeing? And what's working, right? What's working, what's not working? So that's also going to be part of this process as well. We have to continue to touch base, because we know that if we don't, we're going to miss the mark, and that can't happen. We are putting so much effort and energy into making sure that this is a really reliable resource for our schools, but we can't just hand it to them. We have to make sure that we are living it with them. So that's going to require professional learning, it's going to require a lot of feedback consistently throughout the school year, but also partnering with those key individuals who are operating it. And so that's what we're committed to do.
Oh, I appreciate that, because the teachers, I mean, they have so much.
Absolutely.
And other people in the building. So it's good to always keep them, instead of it being a top-down.
Absolutely, yep.
We have to know from them what's working and not working. So thank you.
Mr. Edwards, please.
Thank you. I heard, based upon some of our conversations about the parent partnering behaviors, I really liked hearing that coming forward. One of the challenges that I've always had when we get to an expulsion meeting is, what were those behaviors that led up to that conversation? And that, to me, is the vehicle of the student code of conduct that can help prevent expulsion hearings, hopefully. And I know that sometimes we inherit those issues when a person relocates into our school district, but the one thing that I want to ask is, how often are you going to refresh this document?
I think every year, yeah, every year.
So it's an annual refresh, unless there's a large update to legislation. We've had to do that from time to time with CESSAR legislation over the years, but generally, it's every year.
So one of the things that I would suggest is, I know that, I asked when we met the last time in terms of the community engagement and the family engagement part that built this document in the first place, I'd love to see a stronger flexibility of getting to the families. I think that when we don't have a Saturday opportunity for our families to meet up, I know that we did that for the Hispanic listening tour that Mr. Connor did. And the more that we can, because I look at the behaviors, you know, when we went through the two years of COVID, it was just, you know, all hands on deck. As we came out of the pandemic, we all ran to make sure that we were dealing with our students' learning losses. But then we started to hear about behaviors as a huge problem, not just in our schools, but across the country. And so I think we're still cleaning a lot of that up, and this is an opportunity for us to reach into the community and reach into parents. I know that when we were in Ashton, they did a whole lot of, or I shouldn't say, there was one night that we all went to, that they did parenting skills and offered what I perceive to be parenting partnering behaviors that was between the school and the family and things that they could work on together. And those are the kinds of things that And those are the kinds of things that, again, the more we can get into the community and engage those conversations and be available, because parents are running all over just putting food on the table after school programs. So can we find them at 6:30 at night? And can we find them at 7 o'clock at night or on a Saturday? And flex so that we're really getting parents engaged in this conversation with behavior sooner than later.
I love that. I'm really excited about our meeting that's coming up in June with our school, we're going to have school and district leaders there as well as our community partners because we really want to lean on them. We've spoken to all of our community partners in advance of that meeting to say, hey, this is the focus of the meeting. And it's going to almost start out as like a think tank. Okay, let's put these ideas on the table, including the examples that you just had for alternative hours, but also something different that's going to be captivating so parents will want to, you know, really get the help that they may need when their child is facing a serious violation of the code of student conduct. So I'm really excited about that. We are meeting in June and then again in July and we are going to provide some updates to you too along the way. In terms of what those outcomes are and hopefully be able to build those programs to meet the parents and the families right where they are.
Yeah, I, I have some ideas for our meeting that I'm excited to talk through with them. But I think that if we can capitalize on themes that we see at elementary level, middle school level, high school level, that we can draw parents in, like is your student experiencing X, Y, and Z? And then draw them in because if it speaks to them, well, I have, you know, I have a student in middle school and yes, my kid is, you know, exhibiting some of those behaviors. I do want to attend that. I think we will start to see their interest. But that is the nature of this, this resources coupling, yes, you have to have a consequence. If you, if you commit this infraction, you have to have a consequence. But if we don't apply an intervention with it, then we're going to duplicate the behavior again. So it's, I liken it to going to the doctor when you're sick, right? If you've been to the doctor and they give you a prescription, but it doesn't work, you're back in their office five days later and they say, okay, let's try something different, right? We want to get it right so that we can fix it and it goes away. So applying the right prescription to the problem hopefully will stop the problem. So it's, it's marrying those things, right? The right consequence, the right intervention. And that's what this, this is born out of. But I, but it does require a lot of entities, right? It's not a, it's not just one magic wand. It's, it's a lot of moving parts. So it does take a lot of experts in the room to come together and, and, but we're, we're getting there and I'm excited about, about the future of where we're headed.
Mr. Enos.
Well, first I want to say thank you. One of the things that I hear from the staff all, all the time, and I know I've talked to Ms. Clayton about this, is, is the consistency in the training because discipline can't be effective unless it's consistent, whether you're at Englewood or you're all the way up at, at Booker. It doesn't really make a difference. And I think the training piece and the consistency and all the work that you put in there, I just want to say thank you. Because I think that is something that the teachers definitely and the administrators are definitely looking for because professional development is relevant to training as it relates to everything. And the, the teaching aspect that you brought up is that you have to teach children what good behavior is. And I think it starts at the very, very beginning. The other thing just to also to follow up is that when it comes into this, especially when it's talking about school safety, which a lot of this can lead to, is we still have the legislative mandate of the youth mental health training for all of the staff, as well as that also goes with the new behavioral assessment that has come out from the state, which has now been implemented and everybody is trained. So I just would say that that for the parents, that also follow up for all the parents is that we're taking that very, very seriously. So the code of conduct with those other pieces all lead into identifying as well as making sure we put the right interventions into place to make sure that all the kids are safe. Because ultimately, the code of conduct is really is what, the consistency in the training is what pushes that whole piece to keep everybody safe when they're in the school. So my hat's off to you. I know this was a big undertaking as, as I know that it was. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Exemplary, and I know you put a lot of work into it and I'm grateful that teachers were involved. My question is data collection. If we look at school-wide support team or the care team and we look at the students that go through there and receive interventions, is there any data by school for purposes of singling out best practices of the students that those interventions that occurred in those team formats were successful? And that aligns directly to, is there any best practice for our school-wide support teams and our care teams with the student services professionals that collect on those teams? What are their individual responsibilities? So that, because I think what you've done is extraordinary. I think that it's all very codependent on what happens in the school-based, school-wide support team and the care team. That's where we formalize bringing students forward for the student services professionals to work with the families and resources in potentially in the community to intervene before we get to discipline and intervene so that we are prioritizing academic success. Is there any data on the success rate by school of students going through? Because I think that that could potentially be very, possibly be a conversation to where Ms. Marinelli was going with her experience, many years in student support services and many years in a school-wide support team previously called student study team. In my experience in that arena as an exceptional student education liaison and as a principal, I found that I collected that data on students that went through school-wide support team, if it worked or it didn't, the interventions. But it became directly related to the responsibilities of each of the student services, the professionals in that room. And interestingly enough, what we landed with at that time at Sarasota Middle School is that there was too much being laid on the guidance counselor and it became almost impossible. So what we did is we improvised what the district model was at the time and really spent a lot of time in dialogue of dividing up those responsibilities and really beefing up our partnership with the parent and with the teacher. We found that teachers came to school-wide support team and left with their arms full of intervention documentation, jobs and responsibilities that was an overload and unrealistic. So that I ask you, what is in the future at some point, what is the best practice in our school-wide support teams? Is there any matrix or data collection on the success by school only for the purpose of what can we exemplify as best practices that is focused around student success and a priority of academic achievement? Because I think the work that you've done is exemplary, but I connect it to real practice before we get to discipline. Because we should be in best practices referring students when we start to see signs of concern, signs of academic success for an individual student on decline. We should be referring them to school-wide support team. So I look to that as being an exemplary practice before we get to the document that you've put together, which is extraordinary and I truly commend you for it. But I feel like there is a step that comes before that that I would like to see in the coming months of what are those exemplary practices and how do we know they are? Thank you.
And Ms. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing that up. Because, you know, in, in the student services department, there's, there are highly trained people. You have your, your school counselors, you have your school social workers, you have your school psychologists. They all need to be working as a team at the school level and with, and then with the parent. So I think, I like how you're setting this up because if people are really listening, it's all interconnected.
Right.
But what I think will also be very telling, especially with the data collection of what is truly mental health and truly making choices of bad behavior. And I think the two get mixed up. And because mental health is, is a very serious thing, but if we have every student that is classified as mental health, then it, it loses what really the mental health and that piece that's so critical for, for students that really have mental health issues versus bad choices and bad behavior. So I think that whole documentation and, and getting everybody involved in that.
Yeah, I think this is, this is great comment and comments and great feedback for us to think about as we move to this new system of looking at our students. One of the things that happens when there's a very, if you go to the highest level, the level four event with the student, and I think this is what I'm hearing from, from all of you today, is we sit back and we look, well, what happened? What happened before this? How, you know, how did we intervene? But this is flipping that on its head. So what I'm excited about is moving forward, I think that we'll work as a team, as a district team, to really support those standards, to put that out to the schools and get impact from the schools, of course, because there are, there are amazing best practices already out there. So I do want to, I do want to say that. And also work with different departments. You mentioned student services, you know, making sure that, you know, we have the support there as well and with some of the other things that are going on to make sure that we're putting that out. So more to come, more to come on that, more to come on the data collection piece as well.
Would you like to, you have any?
No, I think it's a great conversation. No, I, it's definitely not putting the cart before the horse because MTSS is a major part of what we do.
Right, yes.
That is, this is addressed at the level, because you know, we bring this for statutorily for an update annually. And so all of the things that were mentioned in terms of prior, in terms of best practice, what is happening before we get to this level is definitely a work in progress. As we speak, we've got work groups working on how do we revamp to make that efficient, reliable process that can be replicated at every school with consistency? And so we will be glad to bring that information back at another workshop because it seems like there's a keen interest in that. So we will surely do that.
Thank you Superintendent Connor and thank you for the presentation. And we'll be moving on to strategic plan update with our superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, well, thank you, Madam Chair. Great conversation. I know we, we're a little behind schedule today. Lots of, lots of good conversation though. I just want to preface that I'll probably move a little fast so you can slow me down if needed, just so we can try to catch up on time as we pull up. The presentation is up. So I'm excited today. You have given me an opportunity since I transitioned going on 11 months already. It is getting close to that point. We are closing down the final days of school. There has been a lot going on in terms of my entry back on July 17th, the first 100 days of a transition where we accomplished a lot in terms of initiatives that really helped set the stage for me to understand this district deeply, engaging with so many different stakeholders internally and externally, getting to evaluate all the aspects of the district from the operational side to the academic side. But really making sure we set up an infrastructure, starting day one of school, to really put ourselves and position ourselves to move the needle academically. We don't have any time to waste in that area. And so there was an aggressive push at the beginning of this school year to set up a system, because you know, I like to set up systems around how we will operate academically in the academic realm through the leadership of our outstanding principals and through the facilitation of high-quality instruction through the superb teaching that we have in this school district. It takes everyone from school counselors to the custodians, to the cafeteria, to the transportation, to make a school district work the way that it should work. And so you also provided me an opportunity early on, you paused your current strategic plan to give me time to take a look at what's working, what's not, and to bring forth some enhancements as we move forward. So I'm excited to share with you where we've come in that 11 months. You're looking at, on the screen here, what I call the Every Opportunity 2030 Strategic Plan. I do believe that with your ability, that we can do some great things over the next six years. You have given me so much latitude to lead the school district and have, and have put your faith in me and I'm hoping that we will begin to see some returns on that commitment. But I'm excited to share with you where we're going. And this is a culmination of a lot of feedback, a lot of input from a lot of different people, including this board. So where are we going? We're moving from a great school district to being the best school district in the state of Florida. And I don't just say that with platitudes and facetiously. I really truly, truly believe that this school district has already in its capacity everything it needs to be the best school district. In many aspects, we are the best. But you know, we're going to continue to monitor ourselves along with other school districts in the state of Florida. Now, we also got to understand that every school difference is different. We all have different challenges. You got to talk about things like socioeconomic status because those things impact school districts. And so when you look at whether, how we compare this school district to us or another school district, there's a lot of variety, a lot of components that are impacting that. But we don't let that stop us. We, we identify those challenges, we problem solve, we create plans and we reevaluate those plans and we continue to execute because we're not going to settle for being less than the best. So it comes to where are we going? What is our vision as we move forward? With the onset of school choice options in the state of Florida with HB1 and all of that, I really think it's, it's incumbent upon us to put ourselves as the premier education provider in this county. We want to be the best. And to be the premier education provider, we have to empower every student to thrive in a very ever-changing world through innovative practices and continuous advancement. We can't rest on things and just say, well, it's worked for us in the past because we will be obsolete if we continue with a mindset like that. So it's a continuous advancement mindset. That's our vision to create opportunities for us to remain a premier education provider. What is our mission? It is to engage, to empower and to elevate every student every day. So the strategic plan and its refresh is going to be built on five pillars, building off our every student every day tagline. The first one being every student achieves. Secondly, every student is supported, every employee is valued, every school is equipped, which you just heard a lot today in our capital improvement planning, and every community is engaged. So we use these pillars as the underpinning for the priorities that we've set as a board. We've had retreats early on, we've talked at nauseam about what our priorities are on this dais and in one-on-one sessions. And so through these five pillars, we've identified 20 priorities that we're going to focus on over the next six years. And I'm going to start with the first pillar, every student achieves. I think this board has been very clear that early childhood education is foundational to the support of students. And so the first priority is we have to establish a solid foundation. We've talked about literacy at length and the importance of how that impacts every other domain in the educational realm and how every student needs to be literate on grade level and exceeding standards. We talked a lot and we have focused heavily this year with our school-based leaders and our teachers and PLCs around ensuring and embracing strong instructional practice in the classroom. That's where the magic happens. What our teachers are doing every day, right up to the end of the day, right, right up to the end of the bell, right up to the end of this week, the last week of school, is ensuring that kids are being exposed to rigorous, authentic learning experiences. And we also want to talk about, and we've, we've talked about this a lot as a board, is equipping students beyond high school. You know, Mr. Edwards, you used the term enlisted, what is it, employed, enrolled or enlisted, right? You know, those are the things, equipping students for life beyond this experience that we give them to make sure that they're successful when they leave us. The strategic actions around pillar one, this is just one page of it. I'm going to show you the extensive strategic plan here in a moment, but for the sake of time, I've condensed a lot of those strategies, these actions that we're going to embark upon. We have embarked upon many of these already. We've even accomplished many of them already at this point. But over the next six years, it's going to take time, resources, effort and a reevaluation of. of needs to accomplish all of this. But when you talk about a, a strong foundation, you know, we talked about our pre-K programming and, and seeking opportunities to expand seats, seeking opportunities to braid funding, to have a sustainable program, because we were living on semester funding here in the last few years. We talk about how we shape the development of early childhood education, working with the early learning coalition, how we continue to do that. That's a big piece because the earlier we can get students in, the better off they're going to be successful by the time they reach that third grade. In terms of our expect literacy for all, I won't go too deep into that because we had a full workshop on that. If you remember, a few months ago, Ms. O'Day shared our extensive plan around the literacy for all initiative. In terms of a strong instruction, I really think this is the bread and butter of this pillar, is where we have created what's called a focused framework for performance to advance school performance. And that is a data-driven support model that aligns professional learning, coaching, modeling, and support for teachers to ensure that we're giving the best to our students each and every day. And then equipping students for life, making sure that we have CTE pathways, that we have post-secondary options that students have access to, that they're able to participate in accelerated coursework, dual enrollment, and innovative programs such as artificial intelligence where we're exploring things like that, so that they can transition from high school to a post-secondary, whether that's college, career, or the workforce, with the credentials or the skills needed to be successful. With every one of these pillars, we have to monitor our effectiveness. What is our return on investments? What are those key performance indicators that we're going to monitor each year? And we'll bring forth to the board on a quarterly basis how we're performing across our strategic plan. Obviously, state ranking is, is one of those key performance indicators that helps us understand where we fall amongst our peer districts, but we know things like kindergarten readiness, making sure that students are at level by the third grade on that ELA proficiency, making sure we're monitoring all ELA proficiencies in third through 10. What are our gains looking like? How about those that are in the lowest quartile? Math, same thing, gains in lower quartile, science achievement, social studies achievement. What are those students who are earning those college credits or CTE industry certifications before they graduate? Of course, students who graduate on time within the four years, and even our middle schoolers who are getting exposed to that high school credit courses. All of these things we're going to monitor over the years. And you can see we've created baselines. If we didn't have a baseline, you see there's dashes there, and where our targets will be over the course of the next few years. This will be adapted. As you know, we are moving from, into a new accountability model this year. Now, third grade is its own component, school grades are going to look a little different, gains will be reintroduced this year. So we will adjust this based on how the data will fall out, of course, with your, your input. Pillar two, every student supported. Lot of what we talked about with the student code of conduct, I think bleeds right into this conversation, but designing strong student supports and responding to student needs is really where, when students come to school and are consistently attending school and their behaviors are not taking them out of the learning environment, and we're providing the wraparound services needed, because honestly, students come to school with challenges, you know? Some schools may not, or some students may come, come to school hungry, you know? There, there are challenges that we have to address and we can't ignore as a school district. And so really, that's where pillar two comes in to address those needs. But also, not just the academic components, we have to understand that students are engaged in the learning process, a lot of times through those enriching learning experiences of the arts, music, PE. So what we do in that area is really important as we build engagement for students in the learning process. And it's all built upon that student, teacher, or adult relationship in the building. We've got to continue to address and be attuned to how our adults and students are interacting because when they feel engaged and welcomed and wanted and loved in a school, that's all going to lead to higher achievement and again. So as you look at pillar two, we've got multitude of strategies that we're looking at. Some of them are building off what was existing prior. There's been great things. The team that's been in place has really built a great framework around a lot of initiatives that we want to build upon and continue. And then we've added some new things as we've been able to address and, and identify areas of opportunity. So looking forward to bringing in strategies to continue to strengthen attendance, to deter undesired behaviors so that learning can take place and be maximized, and to build on a school climate and culture that everyone feels welcomed, everyone feels loved, so that they can perform at the highest levels, not only the adults, the students, but the adults as well. And how are we going to monitor that? So of course, attendance, we know the correlation between attendance and achievement. We know the correlation between discipline and being removed from the learning environment and what that does to, to achievement. So we're going to look at things like discipline referrals, level three infractions, level four infractions. But when we talk about every student supported, we've got to remember that every student, each student has different needs. We have students who may not have English as a first language. And so how do we support those students so that they can reach proficiency? So we need to monitor, we have gaps that exist. When we look at our ELL population versus non-ELL, we've got a 28% gap right now. So how do we go about closing that gap? We've got great plans that we're going to share with you along the way to help close that gap. But of course, in terms of our ethnic gaps, we have those as well. So we want to make sure that as we look at our racial disparities between performance in ELA and math, that we're attending to those, and as well as our students with disabilities. And you know, we've done a lot of work very shortly with our ESE review and the outcomes there and how we're going to close the gap. Pillar three, every employee valued. This is such an important aspect of our strategic plan. We go nowhere without the people who come to work every single day and put their heart and soul into what we do. And so we've got to reimagine our culture and make sure that we're attending to the needs of the adults in the building so that they can give their best to the students. And that first starts off with just recruiting the best. Recently, we had a great opportunity to have a signing day at the University of South Florida where we signed nine individuals who are interning in our schools to come work for us in Sarasota County schools, hopefully for the next 30 years if they so desire. But how we recruit and the strategies we use to retain them and recognize them is extremely important. How we continue to not only bring them in, but to foster and to help them remain engaged and grow as individuals, and that doesn't always mean that a teacher has to become an administrator to grow. We need to think outside of the box of how we can provide opportunities for teachers to become maybe master teachers in the field, where they're helping others, but they're also remaining in the classroom as well. So all of that, too, comes with a culture of excellence. And so we're partnering and we're actually bringing forth our proposal tonight to you in the board meeting around the Studer Group organizational excellence that we want to begin to launch into this summer, starting with our operational side, but it will bleed over into the rest and remaining parts of our organization. But really just reculturing our school district to be customer service oriented because we are a school district of choice, and parents do have choices, and employees have choices. They can go to Manatee, they can go to Charlotte. So how we act as an organization, what our culture is like, will really dictate how far we can go, what our ceiling is. And so it's all, it's all important to ensure that we're continuing to engage our employees in this process, making sure that they're growing and developing, and making sure that we're innovative in our staffing practices because it is a different world out there. Since the national teacher shortage, you don't have a lot of students coming out of the College of Education into education, and so we've got to continue to be innovative in that approach. So how are we going to monitor ourselves in the third pillar, every employee valued? Well, how, how are our first-year employees feeling satisfied in the work and being supported? We need to monitor that. We need to hear from them, we need feedback from them. What does our annual retention rate look like? What does our sub-rate look like? What are, do we have employees that are absent 10 days or plus? Is it just because they're treading to go to work, so they're using up all their sick days? We know that some employees have to use their sick days, but some may be choosing to because they just don't feel happy in their work. And how we're supporting even our highly effective educators who have been with us for many, many years, are we helping still support them? That's important. The fourth pillar is every school is equipped. This really comes down to the operational side of things, but maintaining our sustainable financial practice, talking about the high-quality infrastructure, which we, we touched on this morning, ensuring that we have those safe and secure classrooms. We're going to get deep into some of those updates during our executive session today, and making sure that the technology we use is not just being shoved into classrooms, but that we're aligning that technology in supportive learning. And so the actions that will come forth through there, obviously you can see that, one of them, obviously the capital improvement plan, which we spoke about today, how we're forecasting operational and, and student growth, making sure that we have facilities running at a highly efficient manner, looking in terms of all of the different ways to support safe and secure classrooms. Obviously, we have armed assets, we have more eyes with campus monitoring, but looking to install and, and leverage technology to help us with safety protocols is something that we're going to need to take a look at. We've done a great job financially in just maintaining our financial audits and making sure that we're in good standing, making sure we're up our condition ratio with our Moody Bond ratings are in good pla, good place, and our fund balances are in a good spot. And it's all been to the support of not only our team internally, but this community with the additional revenue that we've gotten, we've been blessed to have due to the voter's choice. And then lastly, the technology piece, just making sure that not only are we supplying the technology, but we're supporting it and we're providing the professional learning to leverage it in a, in an integrated approach, in that it's not just some nice shiny object in the classroom, but it's really being used in such a way that it, it's extending learning opportunities. And we're going to monitor this as well, but we're looking at things like cost per square foot of energy, looking at our customer service levels through survey feedback, what professional learning offerings that we offer, are we offering in operations? How are we increasing sustainable practices in operations? Are our capital budgets on time and within budget? And what efficiencies are we doing to do things like move towards electronic versus paper? All those types of things help us be more reliable and efficient. And then the last one is every community engaged. So this is where we're delivering effective communication and marketing, strengthening the student and family engagement, forging those community and business partnerships, and expanding volunteer opportunities. Very important piece of this puzzle, as you talked about today with the student code of conduct, how we bridge our partnerships with our family, engage them in this process matters for, for the success of students. But again, I talked about early on at the beginning of this, in the age of school choice, we've got to be cutting edge and we have to be effective in our approach to marketing. We have to be out there and explaining and telling our story as to what we're doing on a daily basis, how we're creating that return on investment with the tax dollars that come into our school district and how we're utilizing them, and just being open and honest about where we're at and where we're going. And so we have a lot of initiatives in the communications department to help us do that, as you can see here. And then of course, strengthening that student and family engagement. We talked a lot about that parent resource. One of the things that we're going to do in our strategic plan is bring back our parent universities so that we can do the things that were mentioned around how do we equip our parents with the resources to help their students be successful in the classroom and outside of the classroom. But things like a hotline for Spanish-speaking families and how we continue to gather feedback through surveys is all a part of that. And then the last two, we have great community foundation support, we have philanthropic support in this district, we have business partners, we are blessed with all of the people that have, want to partner with us and help our students be successful. And so we just need to be strategic in that partnerships with each of those and how we're going to leverage them. And so we've got plans to do that as well. And then our volunteers. We see a lot of people who come through and, and speak at our board meetings who want to get connected and want to volunteer. So our Department of Strategic Engagement is working on a way to streamline that process so that we can maximize those opportunities and really leverage the wisdom that we have right here in the school district and the people who want to engage with us. And again, monitoring ourselves there, but how we're increasing those volunteer hours, how schools are incorporating their family engagement process, business partners, all of those things will be monitored over the next six years. So that is the strategic plan overview as you see on the screen. There are 20 priorities. Again, I think each one of the ones that we've all talked about at length over the last year are incorporated in one or more of these. But I also want to touch in just on the importance of November 5th. As you know, we have a millage referendum that is set forth that is coming on November 5th. And the reason I bring that up in connection with the strategic plan is because when you talk about a strategic plan, it costs money, right? Costs, there, there are things that cost. And so I think it's important for our community to understand that their dollars are going to good use strategically as we move forward over the next six years. So the ballot language that we're asking is to continue funding for teachers, workforce training, student achievement through the renewal of the Abaloran Millage referendum. And the ballot language actually states, shall the Sarasota County School continue the one mil per Abaloran Millage to retain and recruit quality teachers, provide workforce training, improve safety and security, preserve the arts, upgrade technology and classroom resources, fund other educational programs and school operational needs beginning July 1st, 2026, and ending June 30th, 2030, sharing funds with charter schools proportionate with student enrollment, with oversight of all funds by an independent committee of citizens. As you know, we are required by law to share proportionately by student enrollment with our charter schools. And just a few facts about the referendum. Since 2002, this has been a renewed voter-approved millaged, so it will not increase your current rate of taxes as it would just be a continuation. All the revenue stays right here. This, the fund from the referendum does not go to Tallahassee, it does not go to Washington, DC. It stays in Sarasota County and is used on, for our students in the county. You know that our school district is one of only two school districts that have been an A school district ever since grading started here in Florida, since 2004. And of course, just so everyone understands that a one mil is $1 for every tax, 1,000 of home assessment. So for example, if your home is assessed at 300,000 and you have a 25,000 tax exemption, that tax would equate to $275. Just so everyone understands that our current referendum is around $104 million, which is almost a fifth of our current operating budget. Now, remember, operating budget, that's not the total amount, that doesn't include capital and all of that. So this is just operating expenses. That is about 20%, roughly, close, 18 and a half of our operating budget. So areas of focus for this particular referendum that is stated in the ballot language is to attract and retain those high-quality teachers and staff, really emphasize and elevate workforce education, making sure that we remain and continue to have safe and secure schools, and continue those enriching learning experiences such as the arts, and to promote student achievement because that's ultimately what we're here for. So when you look over the use of the funds by the next, and this starts in 2026, remember, and the reason this is being, I want to make sure the public understands, is we're going in 2024 for this referendum because the legislation changed that says now you must have all of your referendum on a general election. So you, we have to go in 2024 because if we were to wait to 2026, there would be a lapse in our current referendum. So our current referendum ends in 2026, and this one will pick up in 2026. So the total revenue that was projected, even if we do, do a conservative 3%, we don't know exactly what those projections are going to actually totally be, but if we just use a trend of about 3%, we would anticipate by 2026 of about $110 million. So those five areas that I shared with you that will be the priority for the referendum dollars are broken out over those four years, as you can see here on the chart. So the first priority is just going a little deeper in attracting and investing in high-quality teachers is really to sustain those competitive salaries for our teachers and staff. teachers is really to sustain those competitive salaries for our teachers and staff. We are blessed in Sarasota to be one of the highest teacher average salaries in the state of Florida, and that is a direct result of the referendum funding that we have. The impact to continue to grow our teachers, we said that if we want to retain teachers in our district, we have to foster that employee engagement, as stated in the strategic plan. So the priority would be to have high-impact professional learning to help grow our teachers continuously. Now, 500,000 is coupled with braiding our Title II funding. Title II funding is given to us by the feds directly for professional learning, but it doesn't necessarily meet all of our needs. You know that we've continuation of our extended school day, that there's approximately 30 minutes of additional time in the school day with our current referendum, and we would obviously want to continue that because we know that more time that students are in school, that's more opportunity for learning. And the additional support staff is really important just to make sure that teachers have the personnel onsite to help with the school function in the classroom and outside of the classroom. That makes for a good operation of a school, so when we're talking about additional pairs in the classroom, or maybe it's additional clerical staff to help with the phones, that's going to help keep teachers in schools because the culture and the operations of the school are effective. Priority two is workforce education. We know that whatever the plans of our students may be, if they choose to go to college, whether they choose the workforce, or whether they choose the military, we need to be able to provide them an opportunity and the access and exposure to what are the opportunities? And so the priority would be to continue and to expand career and technical education in multiple pathways that are aligned to the local economic needs of our county and emerging technologies that are coming forth. We don't know what the jobs are going to be 10 to 12 years from now. Things are changing rapidly. So career and technical education is a very important aspect that we need to prioritize, and that also goes with Sun Coast Technical College and the dual enrollment programs that are offered there. It's amazing, if you see some of our facilities over at Sun Coast Tech of what students are able to participate in and then transfer those skills directly into the workforce or maybe into a continuation of a program post-secondary. And you all know, we have Sun Coast Polytech High School and the great things that are happening there in terms of robotics and engineering, and the list goes on, healthcare, so we would continue to support those needs as well. And at our middle school and high schools, we have career advisors and our school counselors who are providing students with access, knowledge about what's available to them so that we can begin to gear our students towards the appropriate pathway that's going to fit their needs and desires best. Priority three, safe and secure schools. So school resource officers are non-negotiable. We want to make sure that we continue to support the safety of all of our campuses with our school resource officers, and we had the addition of the security aides recently that we will continue, as well as a behavior specialist, which we have built into our allocation models, along with our other counselors at the elementary level, to help students who may be exhibiting some of those undesired behaviors that are contributing to an unsafe environment. So these behavior specialists and counselors really help in keeping our schools safe as well. And with the emergence of cyber attacks and ransoms that are occurring, especially school districts now being the target, having technology support staff to ensure that we are safe in that realm will be important in this priority. Priority four is a continuation of the great things we do for our students and enriching learning experiences, from whether it be accelerated course opportunities, coursework, dual enrollment, AP, IB, ACE, STEM. We talked about pre-K programming in our strategic plan, and obviously, there's been a lot of investment of our previous referendum in the arts, media, and the music instructors, and so that would be a continuation of the great opportunities that keep students engaged in our learning process. And then lastly, but definitely not least, would be promoting student achievement. It is important that as we roll out initiatives like the Literacy for All Plan and we continue to push the needle academically, that we're strategic in the use of those funds. And so we've revamped job descriptions, we've revamped roles, and we have screened for having the best staff in very important positions such as the literacy and data coaches and our literacy interventionists, which will be deployed this upcoming school year. We want to continue the enrichment science teaching positions that have been historically used by the referendum, as well as making sure that we're expanding our choice offerings. That does include our charters, we do give a proportionate share. Currently, that's around 13 to 14 million based on student enrollment, and as we continue to grow in our English language learners, we will need to support them as well. And of course, we're continuing opportunities of beyond the school day in our summer learning So it all goes back to the strategic plan. So the referendum, what I see is the strategic plan being a nice marriage to take the priorities from the strategic plan, funding the opportunities that we have to move the needle, and all of the key performance indicators that you see on the screen here, this is just a culmination of all the ones that I shared with you previously. But where we're at here in '23 and where we want to be by 2930, we've got some great things in store to really take us from being a great school district to being the best school district. And I thank you, I know that was a lot, but I'll stop there and I'll take any questions that you have. Oh, I do want to say one thing, one of the notes that I forgot to say here, that's, I think, extremely important, if we want to put this back up on the screen. Just so you know, just a taste of where we're going and what, the fruits of our labor are already beginning to pay off. So we're not finished with testing, but we are finished with third grade, and our team has done a lot of work behind the scenes to kind of aggregate where we're falling in terms of third-grade literacy proficiency. And I'm happy to report, as you look up here on the screen, of where we're at with our raw scores and where we're projected to be on our final, and just remember that final is what students who have been with us the entire school year, since October. That's how the state defines your final grade. So our raw score right now is 68, we've moved from 61 to 68 in third-grade ELA proficiency, and looking forward to the final number being around 71 based on our projections. And as you can see, when you looked at our district-managed schools only, because I can only manage the schools that are under my purview, I want to point out that we would be at 73% in third-grade proficiency this year with just our schools, they're all our schools, but the ones that we manage day-to-day, traditional public schools, at 73%. And that's a testament to what the great work that our teachers are doing inside of those classrooms each and every day. They're buying into the vision, they're moving forward with the expectation, and they're doing the great work, and it's already showing the fruits. And I'm so proud of that team, and I'm so proud of our principals who have helped lead that work, and I'm proud of the district staff who have really been putting the sweat and tears into it as well. And so that's where we're at. Thank you.
I'm Ms. Marinelli.
Well, I'll try to be brief, but Superintendent Connor, I feel like I really have nothing to do with this. This is, the only thing I think is choosing the best superintendent to lead this district and giving you the freedom to do what you needed to do with district staff and getting that down to our teachers. And I think the, what you mentioned, getting support for beginning teachers, because I think all of us can go back to those days, and how many times were we going to quit? And if you don't have that support or somebody there, you know, we will lose people. And what was glaring to me going to the graduations, and the one where we went to where the principal was able to talk about each student, not one child, one student was going into education. And you could really see that, and I just thought, wow, that's just not a Sarasota problem, that's a national, but anything that we can do. And that professional learning is like, what do they want? What do they need? It's one thing that I might think that what they need, but it might not be what they really think. And bringing outside people in to give that support for everybody, our ESE teachers, our school counselors, all of, to get that professional development, because when I started in Sarasota County, the one thing that stuck out to me the most from where I taught before, we had no professional development, none. And when I moved here, the amount of professional development, that was free, and it also counted towards your 60 hours that you had to have every five years through the state, and it was phenomenal training. So I think that is, I'm so glad to see that that focus is getting back. And the community engagement, however it's done, whether it's in person, Zoom, because parents are really busy today, doesn't mean they don't care, but they can't always get here, whether they work at night, they work during the day, or, you know, so whatever we can do to get that need. And I'm so happy with the Studer, because I think we do need to get back to the openness and having people feel welcomed. And I just think with the referendum, getting that accurate information out there, because there's a lot of things that are not true that are said, and some people like to use the referendum as, you know, a, I can't even think of the word, like, well, if you don't do this, it's not going to happen, or, so just to get the positives out there. And I just think being open and transparent, this whole thing, it makes me so excited to be a part of this and to watch everybody, because we, this is what it's all about, and that end result of the reading going up, that's what we're all about. All this other stuff that gets brought up at board meetings, that's a distraction. That really is nothing. This shows the results. This is what everybody is about, is educating our students. That's what we are here for, all of us. We support, the board has to support you and support everybody else. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and there's just so many positive things going on in the classrooms, we have fabulous teachers, and we just, this is going to, this speaks for itself, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Enos.
Well, thank you. I just can say that, you know, when you really, you look at, this will ultimately lead into where you have a strategic plan that actually focuses on education-based and the data and making sure our kids are prepared, that I'm really looking forward to seeing it, and after one year to already see the scores. And I was talking to Dr. Green at Sarasota High's graduation, and one of the things she talked about is a program that was put in there, no cap.
Get your cap.
To get your cap. So, you know, no cap to get your cap, which cap is a lie, so if you're in the lingo. So, long story short is, and about the initial that we're going to be almost one-on-one mentoring in high school, that every student is going to have somebody, which led to in 110 years that this is Sarasota's high's highest graduation rate they've ever had. That is really what, as a board, that we are focusing on. That's really what it is, is about education and the mission of making our children smarter so that they could be more productive and that they can live the dreams that they want to live and be able to be where they need to be when they go to the future. So just like programs like that, so even just after a year to see the impact, I can only say that it's a testament to Dr. Green, Dr. O'Shea, I mean, there's so many great people that are out there, Dr. Kemp coming in, I mean, it's really to your leadership, I really appreciate that, because if I look at the numbers at 7%, the next year I'm looking like a 14% increase. And then soon, I'm just saying, is just how, that's how I'm thinking, because as I've said before, you know, in Sarasota, we should never follow, we should always lead, and this is testament to that, because again, it comes back with the teachers. The teachers are the driving wheel in all of this. And, you know, to try to do everything you can do in order to support them is obviously is the priority, I know, of this board member, because that ultimately makes our community better, which ultimately makes all our quality of life better. So thank you to everybody and the staff.
Mr. Edwards, please.
Thank you. I think it's been said, it was clearly the best choice we could have made at the time to bring you onboard, so I'm grateful that you're here. I'm grateful that I see scorecards with measurable results that we can track, and I'm very excited to see how, from whence I got here and what the pandemic had done, and the fact that our teachers and our staff carried us through in spite of all of the challenges that hit us, and your leadership and your ideas and your suggestions are really well-thought-out and well-done. I'm thrilled that I see a lot of our one-on-one conversations buried into that plan, so I'm looking forward to these first-year results and where we're headed. Well done, Mr. Connor.
Every student, every day is coming to life, has already come to life, as you have said. I'm compelled to say that we are very blessed to have you here, having been part of this district for a few decades and being, having the great opportunity of teaching and leading, and you've taken us to data-driven instruction, to best practices, you've beefed up our systems, the accountability, the focus, and I would like to point out that since 2017, we weren't growing reading and really focusing in on that third-grade piece, which is what I did when I came on the board, and looking at the potential of even growing it a couple points, and our raw scores are coming back and equaling a 7% growth, Superintendent Connor, and your incredible staff, that is unheard of and needs to be celebrated and recognized and celebrated again and celebrated in our schools. I know that you have led change, and change is difficult for all of us, but this kind of change, we need to wrap our arms around, come together, unite, and focus in on. When we look at every student achieves, and that's, you know, when you came onboard and we talked about every student every day, and every student supported, the work, the foundation is here. The results are starting to surface, and when you look at the greatness of this school district being an A since the inception of grades in 2004, that's remarkable. That is, and only one of two school districts that have attained that accolade. When you refine it and you start to peel away the layers, from 2017 going forward, we started to have some decline for a variety of reasons. We had, you know, change challenges, but we are tuned in and back onboard, and I encourage us as a community to focus in on that and celebrate it, and also celebrate the generosity of this community at large. If we look at all of the partnerships that this school district has and the passing of a referendum and the percentage at which it passes, I think that we have a focal point right now being led by you and supported wholeheartedly by this board, and I couldn't be more proud of every single piece of it and every single employee in our district. So let's go forth and let's celebrate that you have attained what some would consider impossible, and we're only just getting started. So thank you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Well, thanks for all the kind comments. I'll just say this, it's not done without the teachers. The teachers are where the magic happens, and I just thank all of our teachers and the staff members who are there inside of those classrooms, those four walls we call a classroom, that's where all the magic happens. What we do is we set up the system, we set up the support, but it all happens in that classroom. classroom. And there are 18 to 30 little individuals that each one of those teachers impact every single day, and it is tough, challenging work, and we don't go anywhere without them. So, thanks to all of our teachers and our administrators that get us there. Just for closing this piece out, for the public to know, we do have a link to the actual document, the strategic plan document that I'll bring forth at our June 4th board meeting for official approval by this board. Feel free to find that document on our website or on this agenda link for the work session, go through it, and I am open to any feedback that the community may have. They can email me directly, and we'll be sure to review that and incorporate that if necessary. So, thank you. So, moving on to the next item is Mr. Parento, and I know we're out of time, but he's going to make it quick. And then we're going to move to executive session, but board members, we're going to stay at the conclusion of Mr. Parento and the wrap-up of this. We're going to stay right here for executive session. He's pulling it up.
Thank you, Superintendent, board members. Bringing you 18 policies today with a variety of revisions, some of them that came about from our ongoing review and revision process, and some of them necessary after the 2024 legislative session. And I want to thank the variety of departments across the district that helped with these, especially on the ones that were legislation-driven, because we started working as legislation was moving forward on putting a plan in place on what we would do if bills passed, so that we could be ahead and have these ready to bring to you at this time, so that as we go through the process of developing these new policies, we're ready to implement them as soon as they take effect in early July. So, the first policy is Policy 6.93. This is the best and brightest awards policy. This, we're going to request to repeal this. The best and brightest teacher and principal programs were repealed by the legislature in 2020. And the policy does say that it terminates in June 30, on June 30 of 2020, but just to avoid any confusion, we want to repeal this from our policy manual so that people don't misinterpret that policy still being there. Policy 4.12 is exceptional student education. There was a revision needed from HB 73 this year that has been signed and will take effect on July 1st. It adds a requirement relating to IEPs for certain students that we now have to include a supported decision-making agreement. So, we're working with the ESE team to make sure that we have that process ready to go as well. Policy 4.13 is our dropout prevention program policy. We're going to request to change the title of this policy to the Dropout Prevention and Academic Intervention Program, because the Florida Department of Education defines these programs as the same, so we want the policy to reflect that. It adds language from Senate Bill 7002, which was a deregulation bill, and House Bill 1285 that allows parents or guardians to elect for an alternative method of notification for a student's placement in those programs. Previously, this had to be done with a certified letter, but the bills now allow for parents to receive that electronically. We all know you get a letter sometimes, it sits on the counter for a few days, but doing it through Focus, we'll be able to notify those parents right away, and when they log in, they'll have to acknowledge that notification once they receive it. Policy 4.113 is our academically challenging curriculum to enhance learning options policy. Senate Bill 7004, which was another deregulation bill, removed the requirement that principals had to use a performance contract for every student who participated in an acceleration program. It does still allow for that as an option if the principal wishes to use that, so we want to change our language to be in line with that. And that performance contract would still have to be signed by the student, their parent or guardian, and the principal. Policy 4.23 is our sale of textbooks policy. We're going to request to change this policy title to return or sale of textbooks. Our previous instructional materials policy had language on the collection of money by principals for lost or damaged textbooks or instructional materials, but we revised that policy with those revisions to be based on the evaluation, the selection, and objection to instructional materials. So, we want to add that language into this policy so that we still have it here. Policy 5.62 is administration of medication during school hours. This is being revised from HB 883 to allow districts to acquire and stock supplies of short-acting bronchodilators in schools. We've already been working with the School Health Services team, they're working with the Department of Health on revisions to the Health Services Manual, and an implementation procedure for administrating bronchodilators in schools, training personnel to recognize symptoms of respiratory distress, and information for parents and guardians on how they can provide prior permission for these valuable, valuable resources to be used on their students if necessary. Policy 4.20, instructional materials evaluation, selection, and objection to use. House Bill 1285 limited the number of book challenges for residents who are not a parent or guardian of a district student to one per month, so we're adding that into our policy. The same is true for Policy 4.22, library media center materials evaluation, selection, and objection to use, the same change in addition to this policy out of House Bill 1285. Policy 4.70 is our home education program. We reference district policies on athletics and extracurricular activities for students participating in home education programs, and aligning with Policy 4.44 on school functions, that school dances are a school function and not an extracurricular activity that a homeschool student is eligible for. Policy 4.72 is participation of home education and private school students in extracurricular activities, and a similar change made to this policy in line with school functions and the ability of a home education student to participate in extracurricular activities, and also that if there is a curricular component within the program that's needed, the student must have a completed student registration on file with the district. Policy 5.90 is foreign exchange students. We've revised this policy pretty heavily to allow the district to take part in this program, but with a lot of safeguards around it for what we already know we have in terms of crowding at schools. So, we revised requirements for a host family to live in an assigned school's attendant zone, clarify that students will be enrolled on a first-come, first-served basis if there is capacity available at that particular school. Acknowledging that placement into a school doesn't guarantee acceptance into a magnet or specialty program at that school, and additional approval requirements for district special schools that would have to be authorized by the superintendent. Policy 6.0 is our professional ethics policy. In the April 17 meeting, the Department of Education passed a new rule that a principal shall not prevent direct school personnel to prevent or allow school personnel to prevent students from accessing any material used in a classroom, in a school or classroom library, or on a reading list unless it violates state law, school board policy, or has been removed through the district's outlined objection process. Policy 8.16, this is our emergency drills policy, and the next few policies all come out of House Bill 1473, which was this year's school safety bill. This new addition to the policy is that schools must maintain written reports of emergency drills for two years, and those must be accessible to the Office of Safe Schools upon request. Those reports also now must include the names of all law enforcement personnel who are present on campus for each active assailant drill. Policy 8.23 is our use of unmanned aerial systems or drones policy. This was revised originally based on changes from House Bill 1473, that you can't fly a drone over a school district facility without authorization. But we wanted to strengthen our current policy to cover prequalifications, operational guidelines, inappropriate use, and injuries or accidents that may result from drone use. We also wanted to add language that it would require, drone use would require registration with the Department of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management prior to being used on campus if it's for an educational purpose, and also requiring drone operators to notify the district's operations communications center, to notify them the location, the duration, and the reason for any drone flight that happens throughout the school day. Also adding in there that this does not apply to law enforcement or somebody operating under the direction of a law enforcement agency flying a drone. Policy 3.24, safe and secure schools, and I do know that you all are going into executive session after this, so we'll just touch briefly on these, and any of the deeper clarifying questions you may have will most likely be addressed at that time. But this new requirement is that schools must provide student instruction on how to use Fortify Florida within the first five days of every school year. That instruction must be age and developmentally appropriate for students, and include instruction on the consequences of making a false threat or a false report. The school safety specialists must provide quarterly reports to the board on the number and percentage of schools that were inspected or re-inspected, and the number and percentage of schools that had no deficiencies during those inspections. It also requires any person aware of a violation of school safety policies to immediately report those to the principal, who must report it to the school safety specialist no later than the next business day. And it also outlines that all instructional or administrative personnel who knowingly violate school safety policies shall be subject to progressive discipline in accordance with our employee handbook. This is a new policy out of House Bill 1473. It is our locked doors policy, and it states that all gates or other access points that restrict ingress or egress from a campus shall remain locked and closed when students are on campus unless they are attended or actively staffed by an adult. All classrooms and other instructional spaces must be locked when occupied by students except between class periods when students are moving from one classroom or instructional space to another. This policy does not apply according to statute when the facilities are being used in accordance with a shared-use agreement. So, if it's being used by an outside organization on the weekends and there would be school-aged children on campus, this policy would not have to apply at that time. All classrooms and other instructional spaces must clearly and conspicuously mark the safest area to shelter during an emergency, and students must be notified of these safe areas within the first 10 days of the school year. And then the bottom two bullets here are the same from the previous policy, that you must report it to the principal, who must report it no later than the next business day, and that if you knowingly violate school safety policies, you are subject to progressive discipline as outlined in the employee handbook. The next policy is Policy 2.22, public participation in board meetings. Bringing this one back to you after continued discussion at previous workshops. This is the revised version of version four that was discussed on March 19, with two distinct public comment periods, agenda item comments prior to board consideration of items, and general comments after the board addresses the agenda but prior to member comments at the conclusion of the meeting. Three minutes per speaker for agenda item comments, two minutes per speaker for general comments, and a speaker will be permitted to address the board in both periods of public comment if they turn in a separate speaker card for each of those periods. Sarasota County residents, parents and guardians of current students, school employees and current students would be given priority to speak before individuals not in one of those groups in each of those public comment periods on a first-come, first-served basis. And there would be two separate speaker cards that would be different colors noting this information, so that if somebody's speaking at the beginning of the meeting on agenda item comments, they would have one card. Somebody else not wishing to address the agenda but provide other comments would have a separate colored card to address, and the back of the card would contain a list of procedures, and we've provided you drafts of both of those cards as well as the procedures that would be listed on the back of that. With that, I can take some questions on any of these policies, if not, just a couple additional slides to go over real quick before we conclude.
Mr. Edwards, please.
The first one is, is there some way to monitor how drone usage that happens? I mean, who's watching for that?
So, within the policy, Mr. Edwards, if it is a teacher using it for instructional purposes, they would first have to clear it with the principal, then they would have to clear it with the Office of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management, and it would have to be, the teacher would have to be present, so it wouldn't be a student flying it during that instructional period, it would be an adult who's there monitoring all of that.
What about a private citizen?
I think that would be up to the Office of Safety and Security if they would even clear a private citizen to do that.
Well, my point is, I think it's a security challenge, just have, you know, if they haven't done that, how do we know? That's really where I'm trying to get to, and I'm asking the question because it's an important one.
Are you asking if a private citizen's using it for instructional purposes, or if they're doing it independently on their own, just flying over the school?
Independently.
So, that would be through the school police to see that, or if somebody else on campus notices that happening, report it to school police, because that's one of the changes that was made in the legislation this year, that that is now prohibited. It used to be that there were certain government buildings you couldn't fly over, and they've now added school facilities into that.
I think we want to look at a best practice from maybe some of the other buildings that you couldn't fly, a private citizen couldn't fly over, and see if we can incorporate that just as a concern, it's a safety concern from my perspective. I had a couple of comments on the public comment procedures. The speakers will be called forward during a designated time on the agenda in order for their comment to, card to be received. It's not clear on the card at least what the priorities are. I didn't see them on the back of the card, so that when the cards get prioritized, I just, I think if people think they're still coming first-come, first-served, if they've been reprioritized in some fashion, it needs to be clear to the public.
We can add that within that procedure on the back. On those cards, they have the boxes that they could check which ones apply to them, so we can just list that, how we have it in the policy on the back of that card as well.
Okay. Also, in the deadline to submit a speaker card, I feel that there needs to be a little bit of a grace period. I mean, if someone's really rushing to get here to make a public comment, and anything could happen, traffic. And then we did receive an email earlier today about the 3 o'clock meetings, which I thought had a valid comment, that if people are parents or teachers that are trying to get here and make a general comment, not necessarily a, an agenda item comment, that some grace period to allow for folks to get here comfortably and fill out a speaker card. So, that's my suggestion, that there's a grace period allotted. My challenge also is under, I guess it's line 56, refusal to speak or wishing, or to request to pass at your turn. I really do honestly feel that board members need to be present. I've never left public comments, ever. I understand nature calls, I understand lots of things happen, but I, and I, I've never been back there to know if you can hear it or not. I've been back there at times during a general meeting when people are talking, and it's not mic'd back there, to my knowledge. So, I really do think members need to be present, that's my feeling. And then on page, or line 86, I think reviewed is a typo, it should be review. Line 168 is only giving way to content-neutral and reasonable restrictions, that's not defined. What does that mean?
I can bring up Mr. Duggan for that.
Then, if you're going to do that, Mr. Duggan, define on line 76, relevant.
Okay, so first, excuse me, hi, everybody. I've been in the back, but paying attention with one ear open. So, okay, so, line 168, that is language that is First Amendment appropriate in a, what's called a limited public forum. You can limit the speech that happens in that type of forum, so long as it's content-neutral and the restrictions are reasonable. That is a subject of a lot of debate with courts and is very fact-specific, but it generally means that, very, very generally, that you cannot regulate based on your preference for a type of speech or not, meaning that you can't say, just to use an example, someone's in favor of a- Meaning that you can't say, just to use an example, someone's in favor of a charter school, you can't restrict that person, but then allow someone to speak who is in favor of a charter school. Any restrictions you have have to be content neutral and not take into consideration the content of the individual making the speech and the opinion that they have. You can't restrict based on their stance. That's what content neutral means. And then reasonable is just, they have to be reasonable. They can't be, you know, limit people from speaking, that you can't, you know, you have to generally allow people to speak. So the First Amendment that gives way to reasonableness in this type of forum. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay. And then what was the other one? I'm sorry.
Relevant.
78, you said?
176, I think.
Okay, so I, I think what this is getting at is that we permit public comment in here in a broad manner, if it is about the school, relevant to school business here, not just any comments. I think that's pretty broad, and I think the practice of this board has to been to permit quite a broadness of public comment, you know, surrounding the operations of the school. Relevant tends to mean something about the schools, I would say. That's a legal term, and that came from the prior version of the policy. But I think really the idea here is to permit public comment about the school's governance and operations in a, in a broad manner.
I would suggest that that guardrail get pulled in. Like, when you say things like I would say, then that means to me that it's subject to interpretation, and I'm trying to help the board define guardrails, guidelines of, and I, I understand free speech. I get that. But we're, we're really struggling. I don't think we've had a topic in, that has been more discussed at this board level than, than public comments in the last year. And I voted for this at a previous board, and I'm voting for it again because this, to me, is the one that works. And I'm just trying to, if we're doing this, if we're going line by line, if we're getting comment cards, if we're doing it, I'm trying to get the language to be as precise as possible. That's why I went line by line. So perhaps this board can move on to another topic.
Another word that maybe could be substituted, then, would be related, if that gives more clarity.
I, I liked your school governance, school operations. When you said relevant, and you, and I asked that question, and you popped that out, I liked it.
Okay, thanks.
Are you done?
Yes.
I would look to that there's consensus of all board members before any changes are made to the current proposal. And if we want to bring this, it seems, I have not, it, when I guide time relative to agenda items, that's taken personally by some board members. So today, I've not been as hardwired with sticking to the time, and we are way over time. So I don't know if the board collectively wants to bring this back to another workshop, if it is your purview to have the superintendent work on a consensus. But I wanted to, as chair, to represent all of the board and consensus thereof. Mrs. Ziegler, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. Sorry, guys, I apologize, I'm not there. I'm on my youngest daughter's field trip, so, but I did want to make sure I clarified some items if there were any questions. I would say I do agree with Mr. Edwards' statement about the prioritization. Our goal is certainly, especially with putting those policies and procedures, once they have been finalized and agreed upon and voted on, having that listed on the back of the card, I think, was really important. And so we want to, we don't want to overlook the prioritization so that there is clarity for anyone coming in. So I definitely support that. And I also would echo the aspects of making sure we do define those guardrails. I, I think that what was just outlined, I mean, if that's an added-on word or two, to make that clear, and that really, to me, sums up what all of us have been trying to achieve, prioritizing the business of the board, prioritizing, you know, our, our taxpayers, our residents, sorry, and our teachers, our, our parents, and our students, but also keeping, making sure we have the opportunity to hear from everybody. And so if we're able to, to identify those, I, I'm, I'm good with those changes. I think they're minor, in my personal opinion. I don't think there's anything substantial that would be added, that would need to workshop it again. So I'm good with those tweaks, if, if everyone else is certainly, and I think we would be able to put it on the board meeting if, if there's consensus with this, the rest of the board.
Are you okay with the, going forward?
Yes, I mean, I, I would agree with Mr. Edwards and Mrs. Ziegler in reference to those couple of changes that were just given. I think if we change those, then it stays substantially within what we're trying to, trying to achieve with that direction.
Thank you. Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to say, being the last person that just got up and went in the back room, even in the restroom, I can hear there's been speakers installed, so everywhere there. So I, I try not to get up and leave, but when I have to, I'm going to. And since the speakers have been installed, I didn't miss a thing that you were presenting. So whoever did that, I think you, Superintendent Connor, thank you. Because I will get up, and now I won't miss anything. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to clarify. I was referencing the, the comments that Mr. Edwards brought about as far as the back of the card, and then the wordsmithing. I, I, I'm not a fan of changing or amending anything to add in about waiving the time or if, if a speaker does not call. I want to maintain what we have right now. I think that's important to have orderly business of the board. If there's a speaker, their name is called, they are not present, and I think we do give grace, we call their name multiple times. But anyone yielding their time, because for any reason, I, I don't, I do not support that change. I just want to make that clear.
And Mr. Edwards, please.
It's not unlike that we wouldn't agree, so, but then the grace period, I think, is the only other question that I had asked for in terms of when a comment card can be filled out, whether it's at 3 o'clock or a few minutes after 6 o'clock.
We could, with the board's permission, one option would be to include the ability to sign up for general comment up to the start of general comment. So meaning if you don't get here for the, the agenda-specific items, but you still want to make general comment, that would be something we could include with the board's permission.
Well, it, it, there's a priority of, that we're putting our community members or parents first. I'm not sure that we can expect that to happen up until the time that it starts, thinking of, you know, the, the process in and of itself. And I also think that we run a 6 o'clock meeting, we run a earlier meeting, and consistency is paramount for the public, the only form, a, a public comment is not the only form of communicating with the board. There's multiple forms, and I would think that we would be consistent, so.
I would only add that, and I'm looking from a managerial aspect of here, and I'm thinking of Ms. Tompkins over there, that has to organize these cards. So I think there has, whatever we decide, there needs to be enough time to allow for the organization of the process, too.
Yeah, I would agree with Mrs. Rose in that aspect. I think that we have, we want to make things clear, as, as was noted by Mr. Edwards, having that transparency and clarifying things on the back of the card, I think is something we all support. Whatever we define, whether it's at the, when the gavel is dropped, or at the beginning of the first public comment period, what have you, but making it very clear. I don't, I think going too far, too long, you know, there are, there's a 3 o'clock, there's a 6 o'clock. It's, it's like the calendar. We're not always going to make everyone happy, but we certainly are here to hear and make extraordinary efforts to allow public to speak. But to Mrs. Rose's point, there are a number of other avenues in which someone can share, constituents can share their concerns.
And so I would like to stick with the consistency in our current, up until the time that a public comment starts, which would be agenda-focused for all meetings. It gives our assistants the opportunity to have some time to prioritize as, as we have decided to do. I mean, that's even going to be tough, taking them all the way up to the, the first set of agenda item, public comment sessions, for her to prioritize those. Do we want to move to when the meeting starts to give her the opportunity to prioritize the cards? Again, this is not the only means of communicating with the board or any of the employees of the districts. I'm looking for feedback on that process from board members. Mr. Edwards, please.
Listen, I, I, we've, we've gone through so many reiterations, and we're back to the, the policy that I voted for years ago and have voted four or five times for, as we've ranked all the different options. So I'm really happy that we're being business-focused and agenda-focused, which has been my suggestion from the get-go. What I am also trying to just forewarn and do as much as I possibly can to say that it doesn't have to, I don't think, be available to the public up until the non-agenda items. I think that does create an, an undue burden for our administrative assistant and creates an open-ended. I think you can give somebody an additional, particularly for those general comments periods, an additional 15 minutes to fill out for those cards. That gives Kathy plenty of time to prioritize the general comments. And so whether it's 3:15 or 6:15 for the general comments period, I think that's being, what's the word I'm looking for, understanding to the gen, to the public who would want to address the board.
Mrs. Ziegler, please.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the 15, and I think we have to be realistic to the prioritization, both on agenda items and general. They both have a priority aspect. And to be fair to Mrs., you know, our administrative assistant, to ensure that they have that time and it's being done correctly, I think just making sure we clearly put this out. I do want to note that I am, I echoed over the years, the last time we did the public comment aspect, when it was a different board, Mr. Edwards may remember, that we had done it five or six discussion, five, five or different workshops discussing it as well. So it seems to be a consistent theme. Obviously, it does take up a significant amount of time, and I think we're all shooting towards the same goal, prioritizing the business of the board and our taxpayers and our stakeholders who are immediately impacted. So I'm very happy to see this work. I want to thank Mr. Parento, and Mr. Duggan, and Mr. Connor on moving this forward. And so I think if we say 15 minutes for both, making it very clear, again, there's a prioritization on both areas, we're allowing a good transparent opportunity for everyone to speak and hopefully highlighting and, and really focusing in on the business of this board. So I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think we should monitor to see how. Ms. Marinelli?
I, I'm okay with that, but I, I really would like to monitor it and to see how many come in. And if it is, tends to be quite a bit, then I think we need to go back and evaluate that because I'm not opposed to giving anybody a chance, but I think that could have the potential of backing up, knowing, people knowing that they have an additional 15 minutes to get here and get their cards in. So I'm, I'm probably not in favor of that because I think we, the majority of people are able to get here, we get other statements. So I probably would not support adding the 15 minutes on, but that's just how I think, because I think we need to be orderly, consistent, and it is a board meeting, it is a business meeting, and we need to conduct it like that. And we need to have the cards in, be separated, if, if that's the way we're, this is going to go. But I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of adding 15.
And I'm not in favor of it either. Thank you for that. We, our, this, the business of the board is the priority, academic achievement is the priority. Unfortunately, it's crystal clear that politics has moved into the boardroom. It's strategically designed to target and attack board members. As a matter of fact, I had a teacher give me an email from one of the organizations that has actually put out all the soundbites for today's meeting, and it is a strategic attack on four board members. And it's pretty intense and very sad, given the strategic plan that just came out. And very sad considering the academic success of our board members in selecting a superintendent that has taken us collectively to a place that we haven't been since 2017 from an academic success standpoint. I want to focus in on the business of the board, moving the strategic plan forward, obviously listening to our constituents, and the, and giving this community consistency, predictability, which is security. I would like to stick to what we have always had, and that is that the comment, the cards are filled out. And I would suggest when the meeting starts, and so that the administrative assistant for the board has time to prioritize those cards, we're doing something different than we've ever done. And again, my priority is the business of the board and moving the strategic plan forward, continuing to grow academic achievement quality in the customer service and the Studer and the, the pieces that I'm here for. So looking to a consensus of where we're going, I don't think we've arrived yet. Mr. Edwards, I see your name, please.
Yes, I, I just want to say that the, the origins of the three minutes and the two minutes came from two years of, of being personally attacked from, you name it. And it's so, it, the pendulum swings both ways. In fact, I have an email from the other side of the, where Mrs. Rose wants to talk about, an email that she received. I received them about protecting our girls and from boys in the restroom. So we know that hit jobs go out from both sides of the aisle. So all I'm really, I'm not trying to get into a debate of whether it's right or wrong. Really, all I was trying to, to say was that there was an accommodation for humanity, that sometimes when, and I agree that we all need to be where we're supposed to be at the right time. That's really all I was, I wasn't looking for a lecture on hit jobs, or what kind of agendas, or what people are doing for bringing politics into the board. And I just want to make sure that the public hears that that happens on, from both sides.
Madam Chair, if I may, this is divulging. I would agree with you, I'll, I support, like I said, I was neither here nor there on the 15 minutes. I do want to move forward. I'm excited about the efforts being done in this district. I'd echo your statements there. And if this, concluding on basically what you and Mrs. Marinelli had said, certainly in support of, of having it as the beginning of the, the board meeting. in support of having it as the beginning of the board meeting and moving forward with this policy.
I mean, keeping in mind that we're essentially going, if we want to talk about appealing to input from the community, which is obviously very important, we're going from the opportunity to address the board for three minutes to five minutes, and I think that we have some very positive things going forward. So I see a consensus of when cards will be turned in. I do not see any other requests to speak at this time, so I believe we can go forward unless someone's name pops up, which it hasn't. So Superintendent Connor, if you have anything you want to add?
No, ma'am, I think we're good to go. We'll reconvene, five-minute break for executive session.
We'll have a five-minute break. We will conclude today's workshop. The board, my colleagues, will take a five-minute break, and we will be coming back for executive session, and we will resume at three o'clock to welcome the community and hopefully have some grand celebration. And we will see you for our regularly scheduled board meeting at three o'clock. Thank you very much to all.